Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is January the 2nd, 2018. It's 6:02. We're here at City Hall on 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Ben Uvener with Action United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by our own Tony Allen. All rise, please.
Would you pray with me? Holy and gracious God, tonight we seek you. We ask that you would open our eyes, our ears, our minds, and our hearts to you, that in this new year we might seek you first in what your wonderful will is in each of our lives. Help us to lay aside our own wants and desires, that we might live into all that you've called us to. Bless these government officials that sit before us, that they might be your representative first. Bless the city and the people that live within it. We thank you for your love and for your son, the salvation that you have so richly given us. Pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
You want to join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
By the way, for you folks out there, it's Mr. Allen's birthday, so we want to make sure we recognize Mr. Allen's 39th birthday.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, okay, all right. Hope everybody had a great holiday and a New Year's. The roads weren't too slick for you here in Granbury, but we don't have very much ice every now and then, so when it hits, we've got to figure out what to do on it, but I think we did all right. At this time, we're going to move into the citizens' participation. We've got some newcomers on there, so I'm going to read through some of the rules of the citizen participation. The City Council provides an opportunity to provide citizens to present concerns and address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizens' participation period at one of the City Council meetings per month. Subject to the following rules: A person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at one time, and only one person at the microphone upon recognition by the presiding officer will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual City Council members or staff, and the speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make that information available to the City Council and the City Manager if requested. The Council will be allowed to receive input or information for a future agenda item, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion during the citizens' participation. The Council shall allow a maximum of 30 minutes for the citizens' participation during the designated Council meeting. And tonight, we have Mr. Tom Baker.
Had some guests trying to check in to one of my units downtown a few days ago, and he was in the alley behind artifacts and Brussels moon. Couldn't find Houston Street. There's no signs on the square for Houston, for Bridge, for Pearl, or for Crockett. So we spent $2 million on sidewalks and street improvement, but we don't have any money for signs on the corner, so I think we need to put a few signs up, spend a few dollars. Some of the intersections on West Bridge have street signs on opposing corners, so you really know where you are when you're at that intersection, but that's not where we were looking to get people in. Those four corners, that square really isn't the only area. There's other places along Bridge and Pearl that don't have street signs on them. Once you're on Pearl, you maybe know where you're going, but you don't know exactly where you're going if you're going to turn down Travis or Trash or whatever the case may be. Please put up a few signs on the main corners to find out where Farina's is, or the filling station, or even Reds. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Our next speaker is Ted Dickie.
I'm here tonight because I've exhausted every-
Ted, could you go ahead and give us your name and address and all that to the City Secretary, please?
Ted Dickie. I live at 710 North Avalon Court. I've lived there for four years. I'm here tonight-
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead and speak right into that mic, so our City Secretary can get you on record.
Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay. I'm here tonight because I have been denied every access to the Police Department, every possibility of access in this city, and after tonight, I'm going to have to take it up to higher levels. I'm next-door neighbor to Mr. Mobley. About a year ago, I applied for and received permission to replace a metal fence with a solid cedar fence. I submitted the plans, it was approved, built, and later approved. After the fence was built, on two occasions, Mr. Mobley came over my fence, tore two structures down that was clearly on my property, admitted that to the manager, John Hall, and told him he thought I was trying to aggravate him. After that, on three occasions, he came over my fence and tried to tear down the fence I had built. He had a wrecking bar in his hand, and he threatened me with the wrecking bar, and that's still to be filed. After about six months of trying to resolve it, I took it to the Police Department. On three occasions, I have talked to Chief Galvan. He has adamantly refused to allow me to file a complaint against Mr. Mobley. The only reason he gave me was, he said, "Mr. Mobley was a friend of his." The first time, it ended on that note. I went back a second time, got permission to come down and talk to him again. When I got there, Galvan had sent a deputy down to talk to me, and the deputy asked me why I was there, and I said, "Well, I've come to file a complaint against the City Councilman Tony Mobley." He said, "You're not going to be allowed to file a complaint against Mr. Mobley. We're through talking. I want you to leave." Not one time did I raise my voice or say anything. After that happened, I sent Mr. Galvan an email telling him that if he didn't listen to me, I was going to take it to the State Attorney General's Office. He agreed to meet with me. When I got there, I was met with a Texas Ranger. Galvan, the last thing he said to me was, he threatened to have me arrested for filing a false police report. I talked to the Texas Ranger. My first initial reaction was, is Galvan saying that his department is so eneupt that they cannot investigate a simple case of malicious mischief or criminal mischief when the culprit has already admitted to it? After I talked to the Texas Ranger, I asked, "Do you think there's anything inconsistent about my story?" And he said, "Not at all. He would get back in touch with me." That's been two months ago. I've never heard a word on it. I really felt then, and it came to me, that the reason the Texas Ranger was involved was to intimidate me and trying to get me to quit talking about this. That's been about two months, and not another single word has ever been said, no investigation. I have checked a couple of legal resources. I have every right to file a report with the Police Department, and I have been denied that on three occasions, and even being threatened by the Police Chief himself. I even went to the Sheriff's Department. They denied it. I'm going tomorrow to start with the Texas Rangers have already contacted the FBI. It appears to me that there's some sort of collusion between Mr. Mobley and the Chief of Police, and I'm also going to file a charge of suppression of evidence by the Chief of Police. I think there's enough evidence to support that. My opinion is, the man ought to be fired. And if you have any questions otherwise, I'll let you get on with it.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our citizens' participation. We'll now move into our consent agenda for tonight. The consent agenda, we have, first of all, considering approving the City Council Meeting Minutes of December 15, 2017 workshop, and the December 19, 2017 regular meeting. The second item being considered, adopting Resolution 1801, authorizing the City Managers to act for the City of Granbury in dealing with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for participating in the recreational trails grant program, certifying that the matching share is readily available and dedicating the Granbury Disc Golf Course Trail as a public park. Council, you've had an opportunity to read over these consent agenda items. Are there any items on there that you'd like to change or to remove off of the consent agenda at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And I've got a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That consent agenda is approved. Our next item is the deliberation agenda. One quick note on the deliberation agenda, I have chose to move item number 11, 12, 13, and 14 to the end of the agenda for the lengthiness of this, and also the possibility that there may be some discussion with the attorney, so that will be moved down at the end of the agenda item. All the other ones will go as, are listed on the agenda here. The first one is, item number three, is to consider all matters incident and related to the insurance and the sales of the City of Granbury, Texas general obligation. And our City Manager tonight, Mr. Michael Ross, do you have a staff report on that one?
I'd ask Ava to please handle that. Thank you, Ava.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Assistant City Manager. I would like to give you all an update on this refunding opportunity. Staff has been working with our financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, and been able to identify two of our utility revenue bonds that are eligible for redemption. One of them is the 1998 bond, and the other one is the 2010 utility bond. Both of these funds, both of these bonds will yield enough interest savings that make we are able to consider this refunding as a great opportunity for the city. And Joey Durker with Hilltop Securities is here to give you even a more detailed update. He has been able to distribute the most updated financial statement for you, for your review. As you know, the interest rates do change every day. We have also supplied for you, for your review, the calendar, that you are able to see when the sale will take place. That will take place on January 16th, once you approve the ordinance for us to be able to refund these bonds. At this time, I will turn the floor over to Joey, so he can go into more detail regarding the refunding.
Hi, I'm Joey Durker with Hilltop Securities. I'm here on behalf of John Martin, who serves as the city's financial advisor. John is in California watching the Sooners play in Rose Bowl.
Not anymore.
I have no further comment on that. So Ava covered sort of the gist of this, and I've got a little bit more detail. I've passed out a packet, and I'll just sort of go through that and answer any questions anybody has. The first page in there is an overview, sort of an outline of what the transaction is that we're talking about. So as Ava mentioned, there's two of the city's revenue bond issues that are currently eligible for redemption prior to their maturity. Those total $5,629,000. So the opportunity in front of you is to call those bonds and replace them with new bonds at a lower interest rate. Current market conditions project a true interest cost of about 2.75%. You're currently paying about 4.27% on those bonds, so that will generate approximate debt service savings of $368,000, and net present value savings in today's dollars of about $342,000, or 6% of the refunded bonds. So we're proposing a parameter sale whereby you approve an ordinance that contains parameters. When the sale date comes in two weeks, you, in the ordinance, you'll delegate to City Manager or to Ava final authority to sign off. So those parameters are below their maximum true interest cost of 3.25%, not to exceed amount of $5,900,000. Must produce net present value savings of at least 3%, and the final maturity shall be no later than August 15, 2038, so we're not going to extend the debt out any further. Any questions so far? Okay, the following few pages are the numbers and how the transaction will work. The next page is sources and uses of funds, showing where the money comes from and where it goes. This long horizontal page is really the meat of it. This shows your existing water sewer payments on the left, that amount that will refund the new 2018 bonds, and on the far right-hand side, the savings that it'll generate every And again, current market conditions show true interest cost of 275, down from 4.27 that you're paying on those currently. Behind that is bond production report and costs of issuance. And behind that, this eye-test-looking chart is just sort of general information about the market, where it's headed, or where it's been, not where it's headed. But you can see interest rates by week. This is the bond buyer's index, which is sort of like the Dow Jones Industrial Average for municipal bonds. And behind that, you can see it in graphical form. Basically, throughout the year, interest rates have been trending downward, so it's a good time to refinance bonds, if you've got the opportunity. Behind that is the calendar. As Ava mentioned, sale is scheduled for January 16th, and then plan on closing February 13th. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Councilman Allen.
Thank you for doing this, but you know, it ain't one of us up here had time to read this. We just got it. I'd ask in the future that we get it the same time we get our agenda.
Yes, sir.
Because it's, you know, we're talking about a lot of money here, savings or not savings. And it's hard to make a decision on something. You get 10 pages and want to read it in 10 minutes, and I just think that we can do a better job getting it to us. And that's just my personal opinion.
All right, sir. Good note.
I've asked for that many, many times up here. And it's not just you, so I'm not picking on you, but it's hard to sit here and read something in two seconds and make a $5 million decision.
Sure. Councilman Mobley.
So with the 2.75 versus the 4.275, is it 2.75 net of fees?
Yes, the savings quoted is net of all costs of issuance.
So effectively, okay, are we extending out the term on any of these bonds? Are we paying them off for the same, on the same period?
Same period. Final maturity 2038.
So effectively, just so everybody knows, so effectively, we've got the same term for everything. It's like you have several cars. You can pay them off at the same time, we just lower the interest rates on all of them.
Correct.
And save the $300,000.
$400,000.
$368,000 in the process.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Great report, by the way.
Thank you.
Joey, what happens on the January the 4th there, where it says comments on the second draft? Is that something we wouldn't hear about, or is it?
That is, so when putting out a publicly offered deal, we'll issue an official statement that goes out to the investment community, so they see all the specs. That's a document that we work on with Ava. So if you have any, if you want to see that document, she can forward you a copy of it.
Didn't y'all redo our bonds about two years ago?
Yes, sir. Back in July of 2016, I don't remember which issues we refunded, but-
What rate were they?
Sorry?
What rate?
2.15%.
Why did we do all of them?
Well, because bonds are only callable typically after a nine- or 10-year period, so I, like I said, I don't remember which bonds those were, but they were callable back a year and a half ago, and these are callable now.
Council, any more discussion? Questions for Joey or Ava? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the Ordinance 1801, authorizing the insurance of these said bonds.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move down to item number four, to consider approving the full redemption of the City of Granbury Subordinate Lean Utility System Revenue Bond Series 1999. Michael, do you have a staff report on that item?
I would also ask Ava to hand that one off. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, this is really a continuation of what we were just discussing. Just now, we discussed refunding the 1999, 1998, and the 2010 utility bond revenue fund, and replaced them with the 2018 refunding general obligation fund. We also have a third bond, the 1999 utility bond fund, that is callable and redeemable at this time. The toll proceeds, the toll extending principle on the 1999 utility bond fund is $195,000. Therefore, we recommend that instead of refunding that issue, we redeem that issue. That means we would pay it off. We have $1.1 million in reserves for bonds, and we are required to keep bond reserves in place while you have utility bond funds issued. After the refunding, we only will need about $350,000 in these bond reserves. Therefore, we could use $200,000 of these bond reserves, cash reserves that we have in place right now, to go ahead and pay the 1999 utility bond issue off, and that would be our recommendation. This one does not require an ordinance. It just requires Council approval to allow us to pay the bonds off at this time. The 1999 bonds were issued at the same time when the 1998 bonds were issued as well, but it had such a smaller principle that it would just make sense if we go ahead and pay it off. And let me mention the savings. If we do pay it off now, will be $100,000 in interest savings. So together with the refunding, where you were just introduced or presented the $368,000 savings over the next 20 years, we will see another $100,000 savings. So we will be close to 370,000, I'm sorry, $470,000 savings in the next 20 years, but bulk of the savings will happen in the first five years. So if you do look at your spreadsheet, what Joey was showing you a little bit ago, it does show that most of the saving will happen the first five years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you all have any questions?
Council, any questions for Ava on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion, help me out here Ava, to consider approving, a motion to approve the full redemption of the City of Granbury Subordinate Lean Utility System Revenue Bond Series 1999.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is also approved. Thank you. I'm going to pause just a little bit here. I failed, I've seen her sitting out there in the crowd right now, but I want to recognize Ms. Julia Pennell sitting out there. Julia, stand up. She is the Hood County Lady of the Year, I guess, right there, for all that she's done for the city. Well-deserved, Julie, well-deserved. You snuck in on me there, but well-deserved.
Bobby, you should probably stand, too.
No, no, she told him to sit down. Thank you very, thank you very much, Julie. The sixth item is a public hearing and consider adopting Ordinance 1802. Michael, do you have a staff report on that item?
Yes, I'd ask Scott, please, to take these.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Assistant City Manager. What we have is a request from the applicant, Mr. Leanne Daniel, for a specific use permit to allow for a two, one guest suite, unhosted residential bed and breakfast at 104 Waterford Court. You can see the proposed site is located within a single-family residential R-10 zone district. To give you a little better idea of where this is located, I can direct your attention to the smaller map to the south. This is just north of the bridge crossing on 377 and east of Morgan Street, just off Shady Cove Court. What's being proposed is a, again, a one-guest suite, unhosted facility. There's two structures on the site. The proposed guest suite will be located above the garage. You can see a better picture there. You can see the stairway that goes up to the guest suite, above the garage area. As a part of the application process, we have kind of a makeshift site plan showing that they are meeting the two parking space requirement. I had one of my planning staff members work with her, Mr. Abreg, to figure out where we could actually get those two parking spaces. You can see that they have enough throat width where it kind of widens out before we get to the main entrance of the main house, which will meet the two spaces required, even though there's only one guest suite, we still have a minimum of two that have to be striped on site. So your Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated on the matter, held a public hearing. They received no protest as a part of this particular application from any notified property owners within the 200-foot halo. Your Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval as submitted with three conditions: that the parking shall be installed, striped, and inspected prior to any bed and breakfast activity; the supplemental standards of the zoning ordinance shall be adhered to; those contain hardwired smoke alarms, for example, that need to be inspected; and the specific use permit shall automatically expire after one year. You'll notice on your application from the applicant, that's in your staff report, that she put a footnote requesting two years, that Planning and Zoning Commission recommended one year. They felt they need to apply this rule equitably across the board throughout the entire city. They know for first time BMBs, they want to see how they work within the first year, and then they'll consider extending it maybe to three years on the second rotation. So they suggested, in their motion, that they are still supporting, proposing applying the conditions uniformly across the entire city. So that's why you see the one year, as opposed to what's on the application. Again, Mayor, Council, the recommending approval with the three conditions as mentioned.
Thank you, Scott. This is an open, this is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Now I'll close a public hearing. Council, do you have any discussion, any questions for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the SUP with the said conditions.
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Corgan. Counsel, any more discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So are we, are we, is the motion that we are approving this for a one year?
Yes. That's one of the conditions, right? And that's what we normally do, and, and the applicant will have the opportunity to, at the end of one year, to come back for three years, is it?
Typically, they go from one to three to five, and then they limit out at five.
Okay. Any more discussion, counsel? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. The next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance eighteen dash oh three. Once again, Michael, would you have a staff report on that, please?
Yes, sir, Scott will handle all these public hearings.
Thank you. I'll just call on him.
Thank you. Mayor, counsel, this particular, uh, S U P request for a two guest suite, unhosted, single-family residential bed and breakfast is located on the northeast corner of Thrash and Bridge Street, just, uh, about a block away from City Hall here. You can see on the location map a little better where it's located. Uh, this is an aerial pictometry view of it. Uh, you can see, again, we have two primary, two structures, uh, the garage located to the, toward the west. We have a, again, a makeshift site plan showing where the parking can be held. Each one of those little superimposed cars there is a nine by eighteen stall that needs to be striped. Your planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on this. We did receive one, um, protest letter from an adjoining property owner. Get it. It's not showing up, but it comprised roughly a little over five percent of the adjoining property. And, uh, the property was, uh, three fifteen West Bridge that was protesting it. The, you can see, uh, kind of a picture looking southeast from the property toward the garage. The, uh, planning and zoning commission voted unanimously to approve the application as presented by the applicant, again, with the three conditions that we saw on the prior S U P application for the, oh, there it goes. So you can see where the protester is, uh, relative to the subject property requesting the S U P. And again, it comprises about five point one one percent of the adjoining property. It does not prompt any kind of voting shift other than a majority to approve the S U P. Your planning and zoning commission voted unanimously to support the request as, uh, applied for by the applicant with the same three conditions. Uh, one year expiration date, again, the three same conditions, but this will apply for a two guest suite hosted bed and bre-, unhosted bed and breakfast instead of one guest suite that's on earlier. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
You, you said that was a bed and breakfast at one other time?
It was, uh, I think it was around two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, but it's since expired, and there was a prolonged period where it lapsed. So it's a, it's a new owner, new operator.
Okay.
That's kind of, uh, proposing this new startup. And so we're res, P and Z's suggesting resetting the clock at one here.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
What was you saying about you had one protest, but something was going on, what was it?
Well, just, we received one, uh, mail-in protest from the adjoining property owner, and that protester is highlighted in there. But it does not change the, or impact the council vote, doesn't swing it to a three-quarter vote, it's still a majority vote to approve the S U P.
Okay, thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing at this time. I'll open the public hearing up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this, this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns on this item?
Mayor.
Councilman, uh, Corgan.
It, it's just the, the primary residence, not the two adjoining buildings, correct?
Where the guest suite is?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding, this is primary residence. If I fall short of my mark in the applicant's here, is that correct? Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions, conservatives? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, the, uh, see, this is an S U P, isn't it? I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to approve the S U P with those said conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Our next item, number seven, is a public hearing considering approving a request of the Habitat for Humanity. And it's a two-part room with a replat and a, uh, then also down there you see a, uh, an, an, an application for a, uh, for a refund there, and we'll talk about that one there. I'll call upon Scott Sobchak to go ahead and, uh, give us the background on that one, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Out of the gate, the first application request is a replat request. That particular portion of the subdivision, Rancho Brazos Edition, has, is already planted. There are currently, within that boundary, five lots of record. So the proposal is to take those five lots of record and replat them into four. So we're decreasing density here. Now, as everybody's familiar with where Rancho Brazos is, it's kind of in the outer reaches of our E T J, up along Costa Davis Road and Rio Road. Unfortunately, it's, it's also the general area where the tornado landed. So Habitat's been doing a good job in this area rebuilding, um, some of the structures within the area, making affordable housing available. This particular request is in an area that has been planted for some time and has older type infrastructure. It's county roads, it's on septic systems, and it's in a C C N by, uh, that's managed by Southwest Water. The water utility line in the area is only an inch and a half, uh, in diameter. Our standard is eight inches with our hydrant. So, as a part of this being an older subdivision that's pre-platted, we're seeing a lot of the older infrastructure, and that's why you see the laundry list of variances that are tied to this particular application. So, uh, with your indulgence, I'll rifle through those very quickly. We have a variance to three one E and four ten to our urban standard requirement where we have curb and gutters. And obviously, in this area, we have county standard streets with vardages. We have a variance to three nine and four five regarding sewer requirements. Our requirement is eight-inch gravity flow sewer mains. They're on septic systems. We have a variance to three nine and four five regarding water requirements. Ours is, um, eight-inch central mains. And they have a one point five-inch line that's offered up by a C C N provider. We have a variance to four eight regarding streetlights. We have a variance to three nine A regarding hydrant, the hydrant coverage halos off the water line. This, these variances in this application was reviewed by the D R C through, uh, coordination, uh, the public hearing with, uh, the planning and zoning commission. It's typical with these applications where we see decrease in density. They have a by right allowance to build on five lots right now with the infrastructure in place. So we see the decrease in den, density and, and demand on the infrastructure is a good thing. So that's why you see the support letter from your city engineer, knowing that they could build five currently. So going from five to four is why you see you're supporting variances. Your planning and zoning commission echoed that sentiment, uh, from your city engineer, and also echoed, uh, the staff's proposal to recommend approval of the replat. So that's your report from your planning and zoning commission, is to approve the variances in the replat application as submitted by the applicant. Um, and back to the plat, you can kind of see the reconfiguration of the, of the internal lot line being vacated and abandoned, and the easement, uh, being vacated and abandoned in the second lot from the north going toward the south. These are the variance requests. Letter from the water provider saying that they provide the, uh, water, um, in accordance with their C C N issued by the state. The second part of this, Mayor, counsel, is a request from the applicant, and you have a letter in your agenda packet as well, saying that they would like a, um, a refund on the application regarding the plat-related fees. As a part of the ordinance requirement, we cannot accept an application for public hearing unless all the fees are paid. So they have paid those. It's been conveyed to them that only council can return or reimburse for fees paid, especially when it's enumerated in the ordinance that they pay upfront in order to get a public hearing. It's the cost of doing business, but ultimately, it's council's discretion on whether or not to refund these fees. And, um, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott.
Be happy to entertain any questions.
This is a public hearing at this time. I'll open up to the public. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Is there a representative from the Habitat for Humanity? I don't see Mr. Davidson out there. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any, uh, concerns or questions for Scott?
Sure.
Councilman, uh, Couch.
Uh, Scott, would you go again, the, uh, the fees are asking to be refunded and the justification for it?
Sure, there's a, in essence, there are plat application fees. So we have a one hundred dollar pre-application fee, so that's the staff review fee that goes to D R C. Then there's the formal plat application fee of three fifty-eight. That's before we, uh, post it in the paper and set up the agendas. And for residential replats, we have to send notices out by state law. So that's part of the mailing request. And then we have five variances. Again, we have that laundry list of variances, and we assess a fee for each variance, and that totaled three seventy-five. So one hundred plus three fifty-eight plus three seventy-five totals eight thirty-three, all plat-related fees.
And is there precedence for, um, a refund?
He's mentioned that he has received, um, uh, fee waivers in the past, and, you know, that may very well be, and it was done internally by previous administrative staff, but, you know, staff changes, and the proper thing to do is actually put this over to council, and let it be council determine, like, the same decision.
Well, I just wish he'd have been here so we could hear from him if he wanted these refunded.
Right.
Well, I, I, I have heard from him, and, uh, and Scott's exactly right. Normally, these fees, and when I ask the questions, normally, these were wavered, which is really not the right way to do that. And so they have went ahead and paid their fees upfront, but now they're asking for the council, and it's a nonprofit organization. Well, everybody knows what Habitat for Humanity is there, and, uh, there's no doubt that in the past that they have had those fees wavered at one of the different, uh, one of the offices downstairs, probably, which is, uh, probably not the right way to do it, or was, would not be the right way to do it. So the right way would be to come to the council to reimburse those fees, or part of those fees, whatever the, whatever the council chooses to do here. But it would have to be through the council to, to, uh, do, uh, direct staff to reimburse these, and then staff would go out there and then reimburse these fees as they have requested. Now, did they fill out a form for that?
They just wrote a letter.
They just wrote a letter.
And the letter's included in here.
I've seen the letter.
You know, Mayor, it has never been brought before us since I've been here.
Probably not, but you wouldn't see it.
If you look at the tornado that hit out there, and, and I tell you, people work day and night to help them out. And these guys don't get paid not one red nickel. And if our city can't afford eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, we're in bad shape. And I, we're making a motion to do exactly what they're asking to do. Keep you ready for that motion.
Well, we're gonna do the replat first, and then we'll.
Okay, we'll do that.
So, Counsel, is there any more questions or concerns on what Scott has presented to us right now? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, the, the said replat with the said variances.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion on the replat? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. So next, we'll discuss the, uh, the grant, the application fee fund back to the, uh, the applicant. And like I said, this is where the council would have to, uh, direct staff to reimburse the Habitat for Humanity, the reimbursement of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Councilman Allen to do so.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? I will say going forward, this is, because we run into this on occasions, that this is good, that we will have it to where it will, the fees will be paid, and then it will come to council, and whether it's any other nonprofit organizations or whatever, to where the council can look at it and determine whether or not they want the reimbursement or not, so. So with that said, no more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved, we'll, uh, direct staff to make that happen. Our next item is item number eight, which is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance eighteen dash oh four. Scott, I'm gonna call on you to give us a little update on that one, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. What we have is a request from Cindy Peters to landmark this particular house. This will be historical landmark number thirty-two. The address is three oh five North Baker. The house was built, uh, around nineteen forty, forty-one. Its architectural style shows, uh, you can see the local stone, kind of the brittle, peanut brittle facade that, uh, some of these houses, uh, here in Granbury are known for. It sure, certainly exhibits a, a certain type of architectural reveal and element along its front streetscape. Presents the building, um, in a manner that we see some of the houses, some of the older houses that are known for here in Granbury and Hood County. So, uh, it meets the architectural requirements for, for the lands, uh, for the, uh, for the reveal, and, uh, in order to make a request for a landmark. Just as a sidebar comment, they have to be fifty years old, but there's also this laundry list of other criteria other than fifty years old, like contributing architectural features and personnel that have lived there that have a kind of a storied history with Granbury's past. So all these other, uh, type variables come into play when landmarking.
Cindy, are you fifty?
That house don't look that old, Tony.
Note that.
So this went to the historic commission on December fourteenth and was recommended for approval, the planning commission December eighteenth, and, uh, both boards and commission recommend strongly approval of the application as submitted by the applicant. Mr. Mayor, be happy to entertain any questions.
How many of these we have in town? Do you look at a reader?
This will be number thirty-two.
This will be thirty-two, okay.
Can, can we continue the meeting? Thank you, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll open up for the public hearing right now. Does anybody in the public wish to speak? Again. Well, thank you, Cindy. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Counsel, any more questions or concerns to Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the landmark number thirty-two as recommended.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman, uh, Corgan. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. You're welcome. Our next item is a joint item here, item number nine and ten, the first one being a public hearing considering, uh, ordinance eighteen dash oh five, and the second one being a public hearing considering the request of tri-count development to replat lots one dash twenty-five. I'm gonna call upon Scott Sobchak to, uh, give us some background on that one, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. It's a pretty simple request, even those two applications. What we have is a request to amend an existing planned development residential district, which would only affect these two lots that are highlighted in blue. So we have an existing, um, townhome development in this particular area. You can see the elevations that are already codified and set up as a zoning district. What they're requesting is to modify the base district requirement to go from twenty foot to fifteen foot on their street side setback along Old Granbury Road. So, right now, both the plat and the zoning district earmark this as a twenty-foot build line, and this lot twenty-four is a twenty-foot build line. That's required by the base zoning district for that particular type of development. What they are coming in, insofar as a request, is to say, we'd like to amend the P D to reestablish that build line instead of twenty foot, to grant a variance as a part of planned development to modify that to fifteen. And because there's a plat on file that shows that as a, a build line along Old Granbury Road as well, they're wanting to modify the replat and just change the build line on the replat from twenty foot to fifteen. So, those two applications, in essence, changes that one element on those two lots, on those two documents. changes that one element on those two lots, on those two documents. Your Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of modifying the plan development to allow for the change in the build line on Lot 1R and 24R, and similarly, recommend approval unanimously on the replat application to change the build line on Lot 1R and 24R. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item, actually on item number nine or 10? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concern on these two items, on the replat or the plan development? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommended approval of the PD amendment for the Old Granbury Villa.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion on that item, Counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move to item number 10, which is the replat. Is there any more discussion on the replat, Counsel? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said replat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. As I had noted, we're going to jump down, we're going to come back to 11, 12, 13, and 14, which are all kind of combined there. And we'll talk about them at the end of the meeting here. And we will move to item number 15, which is a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 18-09. Once again, I'm going to call upon Scott Sobtek to give us a background on that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Item number 15 is a public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance 1809. In essence, this is a subdivision ordinance modification to do three things. Those three things are to add a definition for concept plan. Right now, our subdivision ordinance says that a applicant may file a concept plan, but it doesn't really define what a concept plan is or how it is to be used. So we cobbled together a pretty good definition, we think, and looking at other ordinances and past planning guidelines, professional planning guidelines on what a concept plan is and how it can be used. Concept plans aren't documents that have statutory bearing. They don't get filed for record at the courthouse. But they're a good way to actually hold a discussion with staff or city council, for example, where you can kind of conceptually see in a graphic form what the developer is wanting to get to, and get feedback from the planning commissioner or city council in order to make modifications. And a good example of this where we've seen where a concept plan really can be beneficial is replats. So between preliminary and final plats, for example, we have engineering drawings. If a piece of land is not platted, and it's still in a state of survey, original survey, a developer has to file preliminary plat. Preliminary plat's a conceptual plat, in essence. They go off, do their engineering plans, and they file their FIA and do the final plat, and then everything gets filed for record, and they go build it. Unfortunately, on replats, it's a little tougher because it's already a platted lot of record. So they don't get feedback from P&amp;Z and city council on engineering-related issues or design-related issues. In fact, they have to bear the cost of engineering upfront before they even get to a P&amp;Z public hearing. So a concept plan is a good way for them to bring forth an idea conceptually and say, here's what we're presenting, get feedback from P&amp;Z and city council and staff or whoever, and then take those suggestions, do their engineering work, and roll their engineering back with a replat application. So to me, it's a good planning tool in order to help the developer out on the front end. The worst-case scenario being, since we don't really have a definition or a mechanism right now, they go off, do their engineering, pay their engineer, they design it, and then P&amp;Z and city council has an issue or suggests modifications in their engineering drawings, even though the engineering may need some of the technical specifications. So again, this is a way, a good way to kind of flesh out these conceptual things on special replat application. Okay, so the second change that we're proposing is regarding development plats. There's a provision in Chapter 212 of the Local Government Code that says if you're over five acres, then you don't have to platted out. But if cities adopt what's called development plats, then you're really not exempted because you have to file a development plat. And then, in essence, it's a site plan and still meet our infrastructure requirements when you develop a piece of property. The key here is for development plats is defining what is development. And right now, our definition of development is any structure, residential and non-residential in nature. So that means, in essence, a single-family residential house on four acres, four and a half acres, is kind of caught up in this net. So what we're doing is trying to be a little more user-friendly. And scale back our ordinance requirements to say, there's no need to catch these single-family residential houses that meet the county standards in our APJ, for example, that can be permitted on well and septic if there are four acres or more. And I think, if I'm correct, if the county standards are two acres for septic?
Yes.
But you have to be on central water and three acres if you're on well.
They've just changed that.
They've just changed it, okay. So this would allow for greater flexibility because we're requesting that the... Yeah. So when we're defining under 2.9B, the term development means that the construction of any building structure improvement of any nature, attached residential townhome, multifamily patio home, or non-residential, we're catching the large-scale residential developments like the apartment complexes and the patio home community or multifamily communities. But we don't want to catch the single-family residential on large real estate property. So we're kicking that out of the definition. And we're further highlighting that on subsection four, where it says, greater than five acres in size, no public improvements is being dedicated, and not single-family residential detached, which is exempted from these regulations. So we're, again, with this change, making them a little more user-friendly, I think. The third change in the subdivision ordinance applies to this particular section where we have a standard for building a pad, a residential pad in a single-family district or commercial district. And before the foundation, you have to have a certain amount of grading or pad that's built up that meets a standard, and it's measured from the flow line of the curb, six inches plus 2% the horizontal distance to the slab. And if a developer's not able to do that, then there's a provision for them to have an engineer work with our engineer and have it permissible based on a licensed engineer. Unfortunately, our ordinance currently says the Community Development Department may approve alternative standards of site rating, and that's not the way we're organized right now. So we don't have engineers in our department. We're planners. And what we're doing in this particular change is saying that the city engineer may approve alternative standards, provided that the developer's engineer designed something, the burden falls on them and their engineer stamp and seal. Our engineer can review it, and then the inspections and permitting department can permit it once it's done. If it meets our standard foundation site design standards, then they can, they don't have to go through this. And they just go about their business. And typically, when they do a subdivision, as a part of their engineering plan, what they do is they submit a site rating plan showing all their foundation elevations with the, they balance cut and fill, and they make everything work, and they meet the 2%. But if they're unable to do that, because things fall off toward more of a ravine or a sloping river toward the back, there's a way to address this. And the proper way to address this is with a licensed engineer. So that's what this change proposes. These three changes were all approved unanimously by your Planning and Zoning Commission. They're all recommended by DRC Mayor and Counsel. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Scott, do all these show up on the website?
So, yeah, all these are in our subdivision ordinance. So it's just right now, our subdivision ordinance has the older language. But once counsel approves this, if they do in the event approve this tonight, then within a day or two, we'll get it on the website.
Okay, Scott, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Scott.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
First, I think it's a good idea, on everything I heard, friendly, I like that. Only as engineer you talk about, let's say, for instance, if you're building in the water on a lake, understand that's a drainage area. Let's say you're Harbor Lakes, no gophers, no lake, you're in a community. And you want the water to fall to the street. If it didn't fall the two inches that you're talking about, then you'd have to have an engineer to approve it for the city. And I don't have a problem with that, but I just want to make sure I understand that right.
So in essence, the city engineer, this particular provision allows for things that are not captured on the engineering plans that don't meet the six inches plus the 2% horizontal.
There you go.
So if you go from the flow line up six inches, and then you measure horizontally at a grade of 2%, then you can calculate what your, on flat piece of land, what your building pad elevation should be. And Granbury is unique because we got all these water bodies and tributaries, too. So we got some finished floor elevations and FEMA requirements that kind of dovetail into that as well, that you have to have two-foot of free board. But if you're able to meet those minimum standards, which most developers can, then you just show that on your site plan with your grading plan. This allows for something, every property has its own unique hardships, and some of them are topography. And this allows for the developer's engineer to work with our engineer to do something a little different. Or if something happens on a piece of property that was not planned, have their engineer just send something over to our engineer.
Exactly. And that's the way Harbor Lakes is doing it now. They're building their pads as they go. It really makes it handy for the builder.
A long time, well, when I first got here, we didn't have that provision, our subdivision ordinance, where they foresight was needed to balance cut and fill, and builders were coming in having to put in, you know, three or four feet of fill.
Yeah.
So this is kind of a step to move closer to help manage the stormwater from an engineering standpoint, but to have the pad prepped as much as possible when the building comes in.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, it is a public hearing. I'll open this item up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more discussion or comments for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the subdivision ordinances as stated.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on the amendments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Our next item is item number 16 and 17. We're going to combine them. One is for a rezoning, and the next one is for a replat, or for an SUP, I'm sorry. And I'm going to call upon Scott Sobtek to discuss that one for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. What we have is a request to rezone the entirety of the new area for the Granbury Municipal Airport to industrial, to allow for the expansion of the airport to continue toward the west of the city, toward the loop. You can see the current airport here, that gray area, is an industrial zoning district. But the property's not platted. This is generally the new area that's part of that little over 300 acres. You can see it's still in interim holding, which is an ag kind of placeholder zoning district. So the proposal is to include the new area into the industrial district. The other provision of that is, within industrial, we also need an SUP to allow for both public and private airports. There is no, currently, there is no SUP issued for the existing airport nor the planned airport. So your city staff and Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending applying an SUP to both the existing and the future area to be rezoned to allow for public and private interests or investments into the area. It will be a public airport, Granbury Municipal Airport, but we've had, in the very recent near term, a couple of people want to invest into private hangars. And if we just call it a public airport, we want to make it clear that this will also allow for public or private investments on public property. That may be through a lease agreement that would come back to council, for example, to allow for long-term lease on a private hangar on that particular piece of property. So this would allow for the zoning entitlement to be in place for the zoning districts, and the SUPs for both public operation and private investment. I will mention that the property is not platted, so that's still an unresolved issue. So if we were to get a request by anybody, even the city, for a principal building here, we could not issue a permit on this because we can't issue a permit on unplanted property. So I would suspect that that's the next step, if in the event the council approves the zoning entitlement tonight, that maybe staff would work up maybe a proposal and get a cost in order to what it would take to get a surveyor out there to create the lots and pipe this properly and record it at the courthouse properly. Your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval as presented for both the rezoning request and the SUP by the city. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearings. Anybody in the public wish to speak on these two items? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more discussions or any questions for Scott on these two items? If not, I'll entertain a motion for number 16 first. We'll look at 16. Item number 16, to approve the said rezoning.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion on the rezoning? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, moving to item number 17, which has a SUP request. Counsel, do you have any more discussion or any questions for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is item number 18. Our next item is item number 18, which is a public hearing considering the request of Gary Platt for two variances to a subdivision ordinance. Scott, can you give us some background on that one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor, Counsel. What we have is a request of a property owner who's looking at developing this particular piece of property. This is located just off Acton Highway, south of Big Lots. You can see here, this is Big Lots, just north of the screen. Stonewall Title is here, Tom Cox Road, and then the Ingram Concrete Batching Plant is here. It's undeveloped, but it is platted. And so this is a great example of that concept plan that we talked about earlier, that we can kind of see what's going on in order to get feedback from P&amp;Z and city council. But in order to go further on this, one of the things that the developer who's looking at this property takes a step back and saying that he's looking at a, somewhat of an assisted living facility that's kind of laid out conceptually like this. And one of the things that they're looking at developing this piece of property is the fact that... is the fact that Acton Road is one of those old state highways that does have bar ditches. It is undeveloped, they, according to them, are having trouble meeting the design requirements with respect to sidewalks, and they don't want to put in streetlights. They would also rather put in, not the big mast, but they would like to put in the lighted bollards, the little kind of stub bollards with the light, when you come into, you know, they're only about four feet tall, instead, in lieu of the streetlights. So, they believe that it affects their ability to coordinate the geometric design of the site. And I know we have an applicant from Beehive, that's here, Beehive Homes, who's the applicant, that may speak a little better on this. But, what we have is two variance requests, one to not install sidewalks, and then secondly, to not install our standard streetlight mast. The procedure in looking at these variance requests is that the applicant submit the request to the Development Review Committee. That committee is made up of your city staff, your engineer, public works department, inspections, permitting department, your planning department, all the utilities are part of that. And then, your DRC will convey their findings over to the city engineer, who writes a memorandum summarizing your DRC staff report, and provides that to you in your agenda to council packet. At DRC, we discussed the two requests in length, and your DRC, as mentioned, and your letter from the city engineer recommending denial of both. We've had staff go out there at night to look at streetlights, to see how well illuminated it is. And they don't see a reason to want to recommend to granting a variance regarding streetlights as they think the streetlights are needed. Again, we're working with a raw piece of property, it's always good, from the city staff's perspective, to actually apply all the supplemental standards and work from the supplemental standards inward, rather than the building outward, and then say, okay, we don't have enough room for sidewalks or parking now. So, that's, plus we got it codified as a part of our supplemental standard design requirements, and that's the first thing that most of your consultants look at, is to say, okay, how much landscaping do I need? Do I need sidewalks? What is my parking requirements? What is my other supplemental design regulations that are borne by me? And then ultimately, that kind of dictates what kind of building footprint you wind up with. So, you have a letter from the city engineer dated December 13th that summarizes your DRC meeting, recommending not to approve the variances as submitted by the applicant. And I think that's it, Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions. Should the council have any? I know, again, the applicants here in the audience.
Thank you, Scott. Well, with that said, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Yes, sir. You may.
My name's Gary Millholland, I live here in town, and I know this applicant very well, Beehive Homes, they're an old client of mine, I was a banker for 41 years. We've got about 160 of these in 16 states, and they're rapidly growing in Texas, they've got seven under construction right now. And this was going to be the more recent one, they planned to put probably three of these in the Granbury or the Hood County area before it's over. Part of, part of the problem we've had in this particular project is that the sidewalks cut into the green space, we've cut it back from three buildings to two buildings plus a doctor's office. And when we add the sidewalks, it cuts back on the green space efficient, so that we cannot get even the two beehives and the doctor's office in there. So, we've gone from, on a normal lot like this in any other city, we would have had three beehive units and a small doctor's office. A lot of the doctors who specialize in elder care like to locate next to the beehives. We also at Beehive have a, it's kind of a high end, we don't take any insurance or Medicare/Medicaid, it's all private pay, and we limit our staff to three people per patient, as opposed to the industry standard of seven patients per worker. So, the people get a whole lot of attention, and we build them in a very residential perspective. If you walk into a beehive home, it really feels, it feels and looks a lot like the home that the lady got changed to, to an unhosted bed and breakfast a while ago. It's very residential, and the lights we use, as Scott said, are about the height of this. And they have a round thing that spreads out, and it covers the light on the parking lot and on the driveways very, very well, but it does not create the same feeling when you have a tall streetlight that gives it an industrial look. If you look at that corner carefully, and that, the way this swings around the corner, you've got, you've got next to, adjacent to this property, you have the Baptist Foundation, the Title Company, you have lawyers offices across the street, you have a car wash, you have a rock crushing plant, you have a retail center, and none of those have sidewalks. And what Beehive is willing to do is to commit and bond, if necessary, to put in sidewalks if the rest of those areas at some point are required by the city to put in sidewalks. Right now, though, it'd be rather silly, we'd have sidewalks to nowhere, just like the bridge to nowhere. So, that was what we respectfully requested, this is what we've done in most cities on lots of this type. And we're talking about, you know, roughly 35, 40 employees at this site. And we're, like I said, we're looking at building several more beehives before the year's over. There's 150-bed waiting list on assisted living in Granbury right now, and there's a strong need for this. And there are a lot of people that really like to have their parents in a beehive because of the high level of care and because of the residential feel of it. It's nothing like you'd see in most assisted living centers. So, anyway, with all due respect, I just want you to know the reasons for our request. We do want lights, we just don't think that the tall lights would fit the atmosphere of the facility. And that's what I have to offer. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question to Scott and you also, is that, when you talk about the sidewalks and the adjacent buildings and stuff, now Scott, all these businesses that are surrounding this, it's kind of like their grandpa's, right? I mean, they were built before that came about, the sidewalk requirement?
That's correct. So, these were built to either lesser standards, or they were built prior to the city annexing along Acton Roadway. So...
So, I mean, I just wanted to clear that up, because if that building there was to go away and somebody else would build, they would be required a sidewalk also?
Yes, sir, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Well, let me ask a question, I'm there.
Let me finish up. Let me finish.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Let me finish with you here. And the lighting, you have taken, and, you know, I myself, I've driven around there. There is one light, the streetlight around the corner there, and it does operate, but it's a streetlight that kind of lights up that corner. But it is a really dark area there, and I have not seen what the, you know, what these lights actually do. They're, how tall are they? They're not very tall, are they?
About the size of this, about the height of this podium, and they have a big round thing that spreads light out in all directions.
So, are they placed within the parking lot?
They're on the entry, they're in the driveway, and in the parking lot, yeah. And we've used them also in shopping centers, our investors have built a lot of shopping centers with the same kind of lights, big shopping centers.
And your residents, they walk back and forth to the different beehives through sidewalks, right? Or is that a?
No, no, the beehives, if you could bring up that other picture, I'm sorry, just a minute. The, most of the people in the beehive homes, well, none of them drive, none of them have driver's license, most of them are not very mobile. So, if you look at, you look at the small doctor's office, which is on the, on the sort of the left side of that, and then you have the two beehives, each of those has approximately 16 patients in there. And so, the, who's going in between there are either visitors or staff. They would have, they would have a little bit of green space toward the side there that would be, if it's there for them to walk into, it's always fenced in, separate from the parking lot. Yes, sir.
So, the sidewalks is not a, I guess it's not a money issue, it's just that nobody else has them?
Well, it's not just that, it's just that when we make the sidewalk, you'd be surprised, five feet times the full length of that thing cuts into the green space, so now we're going to have to cut down on the building some more to make the, to meet the requirement that you have for green space.
Okay.
So, it creates a problem, and it isn't like there's people walking up and down there on sidewalks, because like I say, on both sides of the street, for quite a few miles, there's no sidewalks. So, and our patients won't be using sidewalks.
They'd probably enjoy having a sidewalk if the other residents would, I mean, the other business would put one all the way through there to go to Big Lots.
They might, they might. If they're wheelchair, motorized wheelchair.
It's a good walking, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Be a good exercise there, yeah.
Yeah, we just want to bring a real, a real fine product and a fine service to Granbury, and it's sorely needed here, and we tried to work real hard to squeeze in what we could. Like I said, we originally were going to have three buildings with that, but meeting all the other requirements, you know, this is all we could get in there. But if we have the sidewalks, we're going to have to redesign again. And the reason we're asking for that ahead of time is that if we redesign it now and pay our engineers to do that, and then we don't have to have sidewalks, in other words, we've got one set of engineering plans and everything set up now, we'd have to redesign it if we are required to have the sidewalks.
Mr. Allen.
Thanks, sir.
Whatever, this has nothing to do with you, sir, but like McDonald's that just built, they don't have sidewalks.
Yep.
Nor does HEB. Wouldn't that end the ruling when we did that then or not?
So, they went through a variance process to, to request from the council that they use internal sidewalks, and they actually adopted a sidewalk plan that brings the sidewalks around the fuel dispensing station and to the internal portion of HEB, and then back around, and that plan was submitted as a part of their application to the city council for approval. So, they got a partial waiver for your sidewalks.
Same way Kroger did.
Kroger, Kroger has sidewalks. So, they have sidewalks along Christian Brothers?
Yeah, right there in front. But they don't have it on the, on the side.
So, they may have gotten us variance to highway four.
So, we can give a variance if we need to.
You can give a variance.
Yep. Okay. Okay. I just think if everybody else had them, and I agree with the mayor, what he said was, you know, we would need to enforce that, but if they don't have it, then why redesign the wheel and make a smaller place where it's going to be better tax revenues for us in the long run? So, I don't see nothing wrong with it. The lights, Mayor and I talked today just briefly, and he was telling me about the streetlight. I did drive out and look, but it was during the daytime, so I couldn't tell, you know, how much light it was throwing, or, you know, what it was going to do. But, you know, with these lights, if you're going to have them on your parking lot, how many do you estimate you're going to have?
Sir, I'll, I'll tell you, I can't tell you, I'm a finance guy, so I'm not very smart when it comes to that stuff. I just know that I've been to a lot of the beehives, and I've been them, and it's very well lit. You can, you can, you can walk out there without a flashlight or anything, and you can see where you're going.
There's, on the site plan, there's two, there's a proposed light pole here, internal to the property, and one here, internal to the property.
And that's only two?
That's what I'm seeing on the site.
Those are the ones for the entrance, I believe, there are others in the lot, but I, again, I couldn't tell you.
Do you have any idea, and you probably don't, but what it would cost to put up a couple of big lights?
I don't know, I mean, they're more expensive than these lights, but I think the bigger issue for Beehive was they didn't want to, they don't like to disturb the feel of more of a home-based thing as opposed to an industrial look, which is what happens. If you can imagine with that B&amp;B we were looking at, if it were sitting there and it had streetlights around it, it wouldn't have the same feeling if you're going there to visit your mom and your dad as it would if you had something that looked more home-like.
Councilman Couch.
So, we don't have a lighting plan with the ballards?
We can certainly get you a very detailed lighting plan that incorporates these kind of lights.
Okay, so, if we table that part of that tonight, and you come back with this, with the plans, we can see what we're...
Yes, sir.
Because right now, if we were to approve the variance, we don't know what kind of lighting would be here.
I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to do that.
And what I heard you say earlier was that if in the future, the areas around you put sidewalks in, you'd put some in as well?
Absolutely, and we'd be glad to sign a document or provide a bond to support that, or whatever you need.
Okay, so, Mayor, that's, I would be in favor of that. Where we, we allowed the variance, but in the future, if the surrounding areas have sidewalks, they would conform, and that will table the variance on the lighting until they come back with a lighting plan showing the amount of ballards.
Okay, I'm going to be, I'm going to, kind of confused here on the tabling of it. About how long you think it'll take you to?
Well, I'm going to say maybe a week. We could have it to you for your, when is your next council meeting? We could definitely have it worked for that.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah, we could definitely have it worked.
I'm going to get this question to Michael Ross here, do we have a completed engineering plan for this yet?
I know we've had a submittal, I don't think we have a completed submittal.
What tied us up was, was when we found out about the sidewalks, the one, the engineering plan we had, we would have had to have changed it to allow more green space for the purpose that we're adding the sidewalks. So, that was when we said, well, how can we, instead of us paying again for engineering plans, how can we get around this? And he said, well, you could ask for the variance first, and then if you get it, you can go with what you've got and add the other stuff. Or, if no, you can't get a variance, then we can go back and re-engineer the whole layout of where the buildings will be based on the loss of the green space caused by the sidewalks. So, we're trying to not pay for the engineers twice.
So, we don't have, we don't have a complete set yet, Mayor?
Okay. Because typically, the variance requests are done at the same time that the plat is submitted, right?
Yes, sir, and we discussed that, and again, they said, well, if you want to apply for your variance first, and then you can submit the plans based on which way that goes, you can do that. So, they offered us that option, and we said, well, let's apply for that.
With what the council's wanting to offer, then you could probably do both of them at the same time, or?
Uh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand, Mayor.
See what I'm saying, Scott, I mean, if we, to table it, they'll say the next meeting.
Right.
And then you could have all that together.
In other words, if we, if we did the engineering plans without the sidewalks to present to you? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I think we could do that by the next meeting.
Scott, would they still need to technically show the future sidewalks and not count that green space? Or how would that, how would that work?
So, yeah, ultimately, if there's going to be space made, topography-wise, for the sidewalk, they need to show that it's still buildable, and they're not boxing themselves in and can't put themselves, you know, in a hole, and come back and say, well, we designed ourselves in a box, we now don't have space for a sidewalk. So, the, you know, we've seen this, a good example is the YMCA, for example. It was undeveloped property, it had a bar ditch, part of their pitch to council was, we have this B-bottom ditch, and we'll have to put it on the other side, it's getting into our landscaping. And in that particular scenario, the council denied the variance for the request for the sidewalk, and they made it work, they put the sidewalk there, and it terminates at two distinct points along the property. So, it's council's discretion whether you want it now, it's codified that they have to make that as a part of their design. So, it's good practice, even if they, if they obtain the variance waiver to not put the sidewalk in, to make accommodations for it, but if they have to make accommodations for it, why not install it?
Here's my question on that, Scott, or maybe to the attorney. Even though they're saying, okay, we're willing to do it, if ever passed, you gotta do it. What's going to, we have got no say that we could make Big Lot, or Reed, the lawyer, or any of the rest of them, that's already grandfathered in, go put sidewalks in. Am I right or wrong?
If they operate without any expansion, or any permit request, or any replat request, if somebody comes in and says, you know, I want to absorb another portion of that property and file a replat, for example, on Stonewall, that's different. And you get another bite of the apple, that sidewalk on Stonewall Title or Big Lot. And so, in my time here, I've seen at least one, if not two replats that involve big lots. So, you know, that's, that's something where you never say never, but ultimately, what we discussed at DRC is, somebody has to set the first domino up, you know? And typically, what DRC looks at is that vacant piece of property that's raw, that doesn't have the prior hangups of being non-conforming, prior developed under lesser standards, or that was developed by county standards. That's the one that really can make the decision to adhere to the supplemental standards and set up that first domino, and then everything kind of is a rippling effect from that point on. The DRC also says, you know, ultimately, these are codified by city council, it's not DRC's place to suggest wavering needs, especially on a raw property.
Is that the motion Gary made, was to not do the sidewalks, but bring back the? Make work? There was a motion, okay.
Councilman Mobley. Councilman Mobley.
So what do you think was the major pushback from the P and Z?
They didn't, so they didn't go to P and Z on variances, and, uh, I apologize, I didn't underscore this. So variances, insofar as procedures, they just go directly to council. You can see here in writing, they do, they make petition to the DRC, goes to the DRC, um, the application, the burden is on the applicant, and then it goes directly to council. Typically, when we see a plat application, that goes through P and Z, and you get a report on the variances from P and Z on the variance as well, but there's no procedural requirement to, to...
Okay, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The DRC, uh, the DRC.
Yes.
What was the major pushback there?
Well, the, the DRC, from what I can recall of the conversation, was that one, that the sidewalk requirement was codified by council, and it's not our place to change it. We looked at two recent pieces of property, the YMCA and Luden Ranch, being the two recent ones, saying those have bar ditches, and they were required to put in sidewalks.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it make sense to ask for a variance on the green space as opposed to the sidewalk? If you're gonna box yourself in, and, and we don't wanna do that.
Right.
But because we don't wanna have to move buildings later on to put a sidewalk in, wouldn't it make more sense to ask for a variance on green space? I mean, I think, or is, is money the object as far as the sidewalk? No, sir. No, sir. We, we... That's a simple solution to all of this. We started, we started this about, I wanna say fourteen months ago. And, uh, and I'm not, I'm not blaming them because our, our engineers are very used to submitting something, and no matter if it's Lovoc or even Austin, boom, 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 it went right through. So when they submitted this, and, and this is an irregular-shaped lot too, which is another big point, it's a pie-shaped lot. So, so we were submitting things, submitting things, and they'd say, no, you got this problem. We'd fix that problem. And then, and then we felt like we'd submit another one. They'd say, well, no, now you got this problem. And then, okay, now you need more green space because of, of where this, this, this thing's gonna drive in, where you want us to, because we had to be five hundred feet from either entrance on the property beside us. That's a text dock requirement. So then we fixed that, and then they said, oh, well, uh, your parking requirements don't meet. And, and of course, the problem there is, is that none of the tenants, um, have drive cars or, or can drive cars. They all, they, they need help to eat and, and to... But you understand we have to have standards. Yes, sir, and I do understand standards. And so, but, but, so we got an irregular lot, and we meet all these other codes, and then, and then we found out about the, uh, the sidewalks, and we're like, okay, well, now we got a problem here. But in our discussions, we didn't feel that there was any chance we could get a variance on the green space, so we're going that way. If we could get a variance on the green space, we could build the sidewalks, that'd be fine. And I'd rather, I'd rather see that, that way we don't have to worry about coming back later and asking for a check for sidewalk. Mm-hmm. Uh, what, whatever, whatever's your pleasure. We just need to, we're trying to meet all these requirements on this odd-shaped lot, because it is a good location, um, and, um, it's fairly central, so it's, it's a good location. And, you know, we, we think it'd be a good, we think it'd be a good addition to that, that part of town. It's very, it's very, very nice. I, I agree with Mr. Couch, and I'd, I'd love to see what the, where the lights are gonna be and what they're gonna look like those. And the green space thing is, is a simple solution to all of this, where we don't have to, you don't have to worry about getting bonded. Right. We don't have to worry about chasing somebody later to get some coffee for us. Yes, sir.
How would you, how would you do that on the green space? So what whereabouts, would you take it out there in a parking area?
I would leave that to the engineers. Would, would you let us count the sidewalk as part of the calculable green space, per se? Would you give us a waiver to that, and to that extent that... Well, I, I think you'd ask for a variance on the amount of green space. Yes, sir. That's what I'm talking about. And in my mind, yes, because here's the thing, if we have green space today, and in ten years, we come back and put a sidewalk, what's the difference? Yes, sir. Other than you having to push building to that. I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. It's a pro, uh, property, and it's, it'd be incredibly difficult to find somebody to build there and attract a project. I think it's, because it's such an odd shape, and it's... I'm glad you're here. Well, no, I am too. I'm, I'm, I mean, we, we wanna find a solution. We're, we really don't wanna be troublemakers. We're just trying to say, tell us what we need to do, and as long as we can get at least two buildings in there, we'll build here, you know? Otherwise, we're about to have to sell the lot, so... But in my mind, it would make sense to do that, so we don't have to come back later. Okay. And I think green space is a whole lot easier to deal with, uh, at this point. So should we submit plans that, uh, have a sidewalk and have the lights, as we've indicated, in the other parts of the parking lot, but, but subtract from the green space and present that as a variance with our plans? Is that what you suggest? Would that... In, in my world, I, I would love that.
Okay. Well, that work though, Scott.
So the variance to the green space requirement is a zoning ordinance, and that will go to the Board of Adjustment, not the city council. Uh, we'll mention one thing that, uh, the council did codify as a part of updating our landscaping requirements, that you get a reduction in green space and open space requirements if you engage in drought, the saving measures. So if you don't use pop-up heads and use bubblers, for example, then you get a credit, and you knock off your open space requirement. So there may be a way where his, his engineer or landscape guys can look at his landscape plan and start knocking off some of the area, which is consistent with our drought-saving measure codified in the ordinance in order to get a reduction in the green space.
So everybody wins at that point.
Yeah, and, and it's still code compliant. So that would probably be the first grab at the brass ring, is to see if he can use those, uh, credits.
But if I'm hearing you right, Mr. Mobley, I may be wrong. I, I agree with what you're saying. But if he goes with, if he changes that, he's gotta go for a variance, you said?
So if, if, if in the event that he's not able to get where he needs to go with, with regards to the green space, then that would go to the Board of Adjustment. And I will say, the Board of Adjustment is a strong test to meet in order to get a variance approved.
It is, and I'm telling you, if he fails, he's gotta wait a year to come back, or take it forward, Judge.
Six months. Six months.
Yeah.
But the, the, so there's five voting members on the ZBA, and four of them have to grant approvals, and they can't be, uh, self-imposed. They can't be, for example, financially driven. So what we talked about earlier is the ZBA looks at it very judicially, and, and, and will say, well, you know, we have these supplemental standard requirements. You need to work outward in instead of inward out. You have a raw piece of property. We know it's unique. They can look at the uniqueness of the property and how it's shaped, but how that applies to, um, open space and green space savings, that's really up to the board to determine whether or not they have a, a true hardship.
I, I wouldn't. I recommend him doing it. I mean, I really wouldn't. I, I would, I would hope it's something we can come agreement on here. Tonight, I agree with y'all on the lights, but the sidewalks, I've, Tony, you've been on, Mr. Mobley, you've been on here. Mr. Couch, you've been on here. We've waived them before. Uh, the light deal you bring back, I, the sidewalks, I think if you go for a variance, it's gonna be a nightmare.
Let's, um, excuse me.
Mr. Couch.
Uh, Scott, do you know, as a percentage of the green space that is reduced when you go with the conservative plan? Do you have any idea?
So you can go from twenty percent, which is our standard requirement, twenty percent of the lot has to be green space and landscaped, down to around thirteen or fourteen reasonably, but the closer you get toward thirteen, the harder it is to make based on some of the cost considerations. Typically, people can save around two or three percent, uh, in order to go. But what that calculation is for a five-foot commercial sidewalk in that strip, and how that equates to saving, you know, two percent on your landscaping and that twenty percent requirement, I don't have the numbers. And that's just something that their engineer has to work on.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
How close are we to that twenty percent here? I, I think as it is without the sidewalks, we, we meet the requirements. Yeah. Well, I know there's a couple that really wanna put, get this done. Yes, sir. Or come to some agreement. Yes, sir. Again, the part that I'm uncomfortable with is coming back later and putting sidewalks in when basically we're not gonna... We, we have the same issue. We're just kicking the can down the road. I see what you're saying. Ten years or fifteen, or whenever that happened, we're just kicking the can down the road, uh, in order for either some of us or a totally new council to deal with this. So I'd rather handle it now than later.
Scott, my question to you, what happens if the council decides to deny both variances to, to not grant the variances? And I'm, and I'm hearing that the engineering plans are not complete yet. Is that true?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that the engineering plans are not complete. So they'll have to come back with a, a, a final plat, or they have to come back with a plat anyway, right?
Yes.
And so they could add, or they could go back and put some more variances on that, I guess.
They could. But they'll need to, before they can file a replat with us, again, we're the, we're, we're in the replat stage, where they have to get completed engineering plans before they can file a replat.
Right. And that's typically done at the time of that.
And they were holding up there, is that right? Because...
It wouldn't hold them up.
Sure if they had sidewalks or no sidewalks.
It, it wouldn't hold them up, right, Scott?
The engineering plans, having unapproved engineering plans would prevent them from filing a replat, but it would not prevent them from requesting a variance to the subdivision ordinance and go back to DRC.
Go ahead. Scott, the lighting that we're talking about here, it's to light act in highway, correct? Not the private business.
That's absolutely correct, and that's a, that's a good distinguishing value. So what we're looking at, insofar as their proposal, is two of those little Ballard lights that are internal to the property, and those are considered more private illumination, parking light lighting or sidewalk lighting. What our subdivision standard is, is generally that twenty-five or thirty-foot pole that's a public mass that you see that illuminates a broader spectrum for ingress, egress onto the roadway. So, and, and, and they're hooked on to a franchised utility as opposed to...
Who, who has the utility out there?
United.
Is it United?
I believe so.
Based on my experience, especially in a curve with driveway intersections within the curve, you want that road to be lit well. I mean, that's just, that's just good, good engineering practice.
And that was brought up at DRC, especially by the utility people, that, uh, those lighting masts are there for safety reasons, not just parking lot.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Ryder.
This is just an aside, but I would agree with that simply because this is an assisted living, and I know that a lot of those, I work with this population quite closely, and so they don't necessarily drive, but they do get out and walk. And so if something were to happen, and we didn't allow that streetlight to be out there, and, I mean, that would, that would come back on us. I would have a real hard time with that without the safety issue of the streetlight, and having a lot of little old folks out there that could potentially take an evening walk at five when it's dark in the winter, and have somebody come around that corner and not see them.
Do we know how many lights, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead. Do we know how many lights were, would have been specified based on our spacing?
We made that request at DRC in looking at their general site plan, and part of our requirement is, uh, those masts need to be a certain distance from each other, separated from an adjoining one, the nearest one that has to be located by the developer's engineer, and we never got that information from them. So we don't know if it's one or two, based on whether or not there's one or two, you know, to the east or west of this, because that, that distance is left, you know, leapfrogged off of that.
But we're probably talking three lights maximum along the roadway?
I don't know. I wouldn't think that it would be three, but, uh, I wouldn't know until we get somebody to locate if there's any out there currently, um...
So if the sidewalk was, council decided to postpone the sidewalk, the lighting still may be an important factor to think about.
Well, I know if possible, just from a, a conceptual point of view, if we had, we're having to have big streetlights, let's say, on the end of the corners there of the lot, and then maybe the lower lights in the entrance at the, that, that were well illuminated, that would probably be, you know, uh, I, I could see it helping both the safety issue and the, and the issue of keeping it somewhat residential-looking. Um, and again, I mean, we're, we're happy to do whatever needs to be done, but what we prefer not to do is submit one set of engineering plans, and then this has to be there, and then, then we submit another set. Because, you know, every time you do that, you're, you're paying your engineers and your architects to redo the plans. And, uh, we've already done that twice, so that, you know, we're, we wanna do what y'all want us to do. But, uh, right now, with the sidewalk, we can't, we can't fit, this is the last one we did, and we can't, we can't make it work. So it'd either be a waiver on the greens, the green space, or a waiver on the sidewalk, it looks like, for us to make it fit on there. And it may be that it's just not possible for us to locate them on this lot, and that, and that's, and I understand if that's the case. You can always sell it. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Do you understand the difficulty up here? Yes, sir. You're, you're wanting to limit our information, and yet have us make a decision based on this limited information without the proper engineering drawings and those types of things. You're not making our job easier. And, and I tend to lean on, uh, the committees and commissions before they get here. Unless something changes in the interim, it would change the situation. And I, I just don't see that here, because they tend to do, they tend to do the bulk of the work. We just, we're just the ones that make the final decision. So, because they spend much more time on each individual item than we do. So that's what I would ask you, is what's changed since this went through, or the, the recommended, recommendation for denial in tonight that should change our minds? Well, the only thing I can say is in our last meeting we had in Chris's office, the discussion was, this will work, but it won't work if you have, if, if you have to put the sidewalks, and we're gonna recommend that you have the sidewalks. And I said, is there any way around that? And they said, only a variance from the, uh, city council. And I said, well, okay, so, and then, and then they said, but you have to submit your, your final engineering plans. And I said, well, I need to know whether or not I can get a variance on the sidewalk, because the engineering plans will change based on the green space. And they said, no, you don't have to do that. You can actually submit for a variance now. And then after you get that variance, if you get it, or if you don't get it, you can read, then you can do your final engineering plans and submit them. So that, that's what they told us we could do. So we said, okay, well, let's go that route. So that's what we're trying to, I mean, the, the sidewalks, right now, are the biggest problem. It's not the lights.
Let, uh, Michael Ross, let him...
And it's not impossible to still have engineering plans completed that show sidewalks that say future, because it probably is a good idea to go ahead and know where those sidewalks are gonna go long-term someday, if council decides, excuse me, that they don't go in now. Either way, we need to know where they're gonna go. The ditches need to be in place. I assume this is roadside ditch drainage. So you have to go ahead and locate that sidewalk anyway. So now's the time to go ahead and put it on some plans, and even if you're not gonna pay to construct it now, it can still show a future sidewalk, if that ends up being council's desire.
Okay, so, okay, well then, well then, that's probably my answer, because if we have to design it where it has to meet the green space ordinance and put in the sidewalks, I don't think we can build it there. I mean, it's just, I'm, I, we, we've tried, like I say, we're on the six or seven set of plans, and we can't. We, we, we went from three buildings to two, plus a small doctor's office, and we just, I don't think we can, we can make it work, so, uh...
Because of the green space and the sidewalk.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, it's, it's, it's almost like an either-or right now. And from what I understand, we, we can't get a four variance on the green space.
Mayor, let me ask you a question.
Councilman Allen.
If, if they waiver the sidewalks, say if they did, would you be willing to, tonight, to say, I'll put up the lights that the engineer, our city requires on your property?
I think we can get that done. I think we can get that.
If we do the sidewalks, you do the lights?
Yes, sir. Now, the only thing is, is, is based on, you know, on what, uh, what the assistant city manager said is, if, if you're saying, well, we'll give you a waiver on the sidewalks, but if the other people do it, now you're gonna have to put the sidewalks and somehow make up, make up that extra green space. I don't, I don't see how we could do that, because, you know, we're landlocked on every side. I mean, there's, there's, there's...
It would be a variance to the green space.
Yeah, we'd almost have to have...
They'd have to give you a variance to do it at a later date.
Yes, sir.
It would be a variance to the green space, I would anticipate.
Yeah, not now, but later. If we voted for the sidewalks tonight, and say twenty-five years from now, they redone that whole deal and everybody's got sidewalks, then you'd have to go for a variance of whatever committee it would be and say, I need variance here to put my sidewalks here.
Right.
I don't have the green space. I'm taking away from it.
Right.
It'd be up to them to prove it.
But that wouldn't be issued by that, I mean, they wouldn't have a reason not to grant it at that time.
So, and, and that scenario, say, council issues the variance to the sidewalks, but they propose plans that are supporting seventeen percent green space, not meeting our twenty percent requirement. We wouldn't be able to, as a city, issue a permit for that until they get the variance run through the process by the Board of Adjustment. So we wouldn't see any activity until all these issues have been cleared by the proper board.
Unless we proved it without the sidewalks tonight.
If you approve it without sidewalks tonight, that would alleviate him from building the sidewalk, but it would not alleviate him from the green space requirement.
I thought you said he had twenty percent right now.
I, I don't know what he has right now.
Our engineers tell us we do have, we do have adequate to meet the city's code, is what they're telling us without the sidewalks.
Okay.
I thought you said it. I heard, I heard somebody say twenty percent, but you still would have to have the twenty percent.
That's, that's what they told, that's what our engineers told us.
You didn't have it. What Scott says then, he would stop, go to variance, and then back. back.
Right, right, that's right, that's right. So before we redo it again, we wanted to see if we could get that variance so we could move forward.
Uh, we're hoping that his engineers are calculating the, the open space correctly and is not counting the right-of-way space, text-out right-of-way that can be expanded, or, you know, the, the roadway right-of-way that can be expanded into, without throwing them into non-compliant, so if they're calculating the twenty percent from their property line inward, that's the correct way to do it, and they have enough space for planning.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So I hate to keep beating this drum, but basically, if we're, if we're going to approve something for a future sidewalk, we're going to deal with the same issue later, so why not deal with it now? Don't we have the option to take no action, which puts no restrictions on the applicant?
In council's discretion, you can take, um, you can approve, deny, or-
Deny.
The, the burden is to approve, so I need to yield to the city attorney on this, but without the approvals from council, that if there's no-
I think there's some concern about having to wait six months, and I would be concerned as well, but if we take no action, we don't, he's not subject to that restriction at that point, is that correct?
But what happens to the application? How is it properly-
Well, yeah.
-poured out, I guess, or dispensed with, or acted on?
Re-submissioned with the final plan.
Yeah, then we consider the, the final plan, we consider, all these things we're asking for, but we're not, we're not being asked to approve something we can't actually see in a conceptual way.
I think the only conception here that you need to know is that the sidewalks are either there or not. We will submit something that will meet all of your qualifications for engineering and easements and everything else and green space, so it's, the, the, the point is, I mean, if you just look at that, look at that drawing, there's, you know, there's this little van that goes across there, and, and if sidewalks aren't there, we can make that plan work, and if they are there, then, then we have to go back, I don't think we can make it work, but that's okay, we just need to know either way.
But they're being asked to approve a plan that conceptually has sidewalks, but realistically don't. Yes.
Well-
The future, they will have sidewalks later, but we don't now, so we, we, we qualify for the green space, uh, part of this, knowing full well that in two weeks, if you come back and say, well, gosh, I want to put a sidewalk now, then we have a bigger problem then.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
So if we say, two weeks from now, or twenty years from now, it's still the same problem.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so if it was, if it was, whatever it was, it's two years from now, and, and we have to put in a sidewalk, then somebody's going to say, you got to shut down because you don't have enough green space.
There you go, and that's, we've got to get it there for the last thirty minutes or so.
See what you get.
It's, it's the same, when it pushes you out twenty years, it's easy to say, because, hey, some of us probably won't, won't be sitting up here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, hopefully, but if it's two days from now, it's still the same problem.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
So Scott, again, back to, if they use a conservative landscape plan, what percentage could they pick up?
It's reasonable that in the landscaping ordinance, they could pick up, uh, two, maybe three percent, based on, uh, drought-saving measures and, uh, but-
That's it?
I, I mean, they can go from twenty percent down to, the way I read the ordinance, thirteen percent, but it's a very aggressive landscaping plan, and then you're starting to get into some expense. From my perspective, because I do site design and make presentations, I always look, to me, it's the cart and horse, you know? Sometimes developers come in and say, well, I need this size building, and then they look at the supplemental standards and say, oh, well, I can't fit my sidewalk in, or I don't have parking, we need a parking variance. To me, the best approach to site design is to work for all your supplemental design regulations, okay, I know a city has a sidewalk, that's the first thing the design engineer needs to look at, lay your sidewalk in. Parking, what kind of topography do I have? All these, uh, parking islands, uh, that's a requirement, too. All this eats away into your buildable space and, and-
But Scott, I understand that, you know, when you're, when you're looking at that piece of property, and there's no sidewalks on this side, there's no sidewalks on that way, and, you know, the, the, the chance that those will come anytime soon are, are slim, so I'm just trying to figure out a calculation that gets him-
I, I-
-approved, and I'm wondering, if you're talking about a five-foot sidewalk, I think that a variance that could be approved would be a three-foot sidewalk, and then possibly, um, the landscape, and maybe that, that combination gets you there.
Yeah, I don't know what those percentages are based on the width of the required sidewalk and how much space he has. I mean, that, that's-
Then I'd like, I'd like to see if, if we table this tonight and kind of give you s- I hope we've given you some direction, um, that maybe you could go back and make that calculation with a three-foot sidewalk, and then what you gain with, with the, the landscape plan, uh, and then if you wanted, also come back with some sort of lighting that, that makes us comfortable with those, uh, entrances, and I would think that could be done in the next two weeks, so we can get you on your way, I think it's probably the best way to go tonight.
Mayor, I have a, I have a question.
Councilman, uh, Allen.
Thanks, sir. If you change that from five to three foot, can we approve that, or is that going to go for a variance?
What's that?
On commercial?
So a five-foot wide sidewalk is a commercial standard, so it'd still be a variance to our standard.
So it's still going to go back to variance?
Yeah.
But we can approve that?
No.
No, it, it's-
It would be good to.
It would be a council approval.
Yeah.
And we, we wouldn't recommend, not that you need our recommendation, but we wouldn't recommend a three-foot sidewalk on a highway, on a commercial district.
If, if, if we just said, okay, no sidewalk, period, no deals in it twenty years from now, five years from now, or two days from now, if McDonald's sizes the bill next door and they say, I'm going to put a sidewalk in, we all got to put one in. If we say none tonight, are they liable down the road to put them in?
I don't know how to respond to that, it's, I mean, it's-
Attorney?
Well, i- in essence, what you're doing is a, not actually a variance, it's a conditional temporary variance that is conditioned upon some other occurrence happening and with, without authority by the city to enforce that. I think the answer is either you're going to grant the variance or you're not, either they're going to have sidewalks or they're not, right?
If we said no, then would they be liable down the road to put them in?
Virtually no, yes, yeah.
So, you know, I don't think there's nobody up here, sitting here, don't want to see this happen, I really, I think they want to do what's right and safety, all of us, but I hear it all the time, and all these council people here, have been on here for a while, we're a unfriendly city, we're unfriendly, well, we're the one that can make that decision tonight, either do it or don't do it. You move on to another county, we lose the tax on it. Mayor, I'm ready for a motion when you are.
Thank you, Cal. Any more discussion on this from council?
Uh, Mayor.
I'll, I'll, uh, close the public hearing then.
Um-
Oh, you got another question for me?
Well, I'm just wanting to clarify something, what I'm hearing you say is, if you didn't have to put sidewalks in, you'd put in the, 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 the lighting for the engineers.
Yes, sir.
And be good with that.
Yes, sir.
Be good with the, I think we're good with the lighting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
When could you get the engineered drawings to us? Is that two weeks, is it two months?
Our next council meeting is the sixteenth.
I think we could get them before, before the next council meeting, I believe we could, I mean, I, again, it's going to be easier if I don't have sidewalks, because it's pretty close to there right now.
If, if you can't, we're going to be, we're going to have an issue, so if you, if we need to push it back further, that'd probably be a better idea, because if you can't, we're kind of locked in with the same information, and we will vote on it.
Right.
So, I mean, I'll, I'll ask that question again, when can we get those drawings?
The drawings with the lights and without the sidewalks. Um, I, I can't say for sure, I'll call the engineers in the morning and see how quickly they can get that out, and my guess is they can get it out in a week or so, that's the best I can tell you, without talking to them. You know, we, we got projects going on all over, all over the three or four state area right now, and, and I, you know, I don't-
Are you, are you in a hu- huge hurry for this?
Well, I'll tell you, we've never had to go more than three months with any city in Texas, New Mexico, or Colorado on this kind of process, so we're, we're, we've taken our time here, it's been a while, and, uh, and, and so, you know, w- w- we'd, we'd like to get it done, but we don't want to just, I, I mean, you know, we, we want to be able to do what the city wants, but if we can't do what the city wants, we want to move along.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's, you know, and, and no, please don't take that the wrong way.
I think, I think, and as we're, we're sitting here looking at the background of this thing, we, we waited on it, we waited on engineering plans since March, and then we finally got them, what, last week or so, or week before last, or before Christmas?
Uh, we got a little, little before that, little before that, but, but-
And now there's an urgency here, and I'm confused here.
Well, I'm, again, we don't have to do anything tonight, if y'all don't want to do this, that's fine, if you don't want to do it tonight, if you want us to wait and see, we can get back and let you know when we can have those plans.
Well, I think what Mr. Mobley's asking for, though, is there, is there a date? I mean, we know we got another council meeting coming up here, it's the sixteenth, is there a date that we could look at, and that we can be committed, or you can be committed to another engineering plan that will have what we're asking for?
Well, the six, i- it's just, it's just, Mayor, it's just hard for me to say, because I'm, I'm not the engineer, I-
I, I understand.
My understanding, my understanding is, is that the latest plan they had, they told me met all the codes except for the sidewalk.
Which was not complete, yeah.
Which would lead me to believe we could, but I don't want to say that and then, and then have to call you and say, no, it's going to have to be the next council meeting, I don't want to put you in.
We, we could put it the first week of February.
Would it hurt you to push it back to the sixth? Because what I don't want to do is have an agenda item where we come up here and-
That would hurt to push it back to the sixth.
Sixth of February.
We hit this ball back and forth again, and then we-
Yeah.
That'd give you a month.
I think that'd be fine, I think that'd be fine, if we could have-
Mayor, I'm ready for the motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
I'm going to make a motion.
Postpone it, postpone it.
Go. I didn't hear you. No, I didn't want to postpone it, okay. I want to make a motion to approve it tonight with the variance on the sidewalk, there'll be no sidewalk, but the streetlights and the lights will be per our city approval, and they will be back to us with the drawings in the first meeting of February, which is the sixth of February.
So, Mr. Allen, basically, you are, you are not approving the variances for the streetlights, because if you don't approve the variances, then it falls back to the city-
That's right.
...requirement, and the variance on the sidewalks-
Go away with them, go away with them.
Well, you're going to get, you want, you're giving, giving, giving him the variance on the sidewalk?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
So you made a motion to accept the variances on the sidewalks and deny the variance on the streetlights?
That's correct.
Thank you. So we had a motion to deny the variance on the, uh, streetlights and approve the variance on the sidewalks, and I had a second by Councilman Couch?
And he will bring back the drawings on the-
Any more dis- discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, uh, Ryder.
In addition to the lighting, I also still believe that the safety issue falls, uh, with the sidewalk, and I, I would rather postpone this and have them come back with a solid plan than vote on something that we're not entirely sure about. I would, I'm very visual, I think a couple of us are, I'd rather see it.
We're not voting on the, on the final plot.
But we've still got the issue with sidewalks.
Well, we're voting, I've made a motion to go away with them.
Yeah, and I'm not ready to do that yet.
Okay.
Okay.
We got, we got to go through this motion right now, we've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Okay, so, no more discussion? Captain Corrigan, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Couch?
Yes.
Councilman Mobley?
Nay.
Councilman Ryder?
Nay.
So with that said, it fails. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Counsel, as I stated, we're going to move down to item number- By the way, through all that, did I close the public hearing? I think I did.
You did, no.
I did, okay. We're going to move to item number eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, and, uh, I'm just going to go ahead and let Scott Sobcheck kick this one off for us, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. We have a request from two property owners that occupy one structure with common wall to separate residential units, they're currently in a zoned townhome district. There we go, so there's the zoning map, and you can see the subject property in brown, labeled townhome, and, uh, what we have is an application from both property owners, and they live on this property and this property, again, it's one structure, there's a common wall that bisects that runs generally east-west through the property, the structure overlaps that, and they reside on each of the units respectively, and, and they are all property owners of record, signed off on all the applications, all four applications that you entered into record, Mayor. So what we have is a request from the applicant who lives to the south that would ultimately like to get to operating a short-term rental unit or a bed breakfast at that site, uh, in the southernmost structure. Our current zoning ordinance does not allow for, there's a nice aerial picture of the structure, so we have, we have one living unit here, one living unit here, and there's a separate address living unit, uh, in the garage, and then, again, the property line runs east-west. Okay, so, this is our comprehensive plan, the first application is to amend the comprehensive plan to allow for a change in the comprehensive plan for medium-density residential. Again, our zoning map, you can see the area highlighted, uh, overlaid on an aerial photography of the structure of the principal building, the two separate living units and the garage structure. This is the zoning notification map that shows the property owner's protest, the distinction in red, um, are those that have signed owner petitions, the one that's in pink, uh, the applicant or protester did not sign it, by ordinance, they're required to sign the protest petition. We received it, it's part of your agenda packet, you'll notice that the signature is omitted, so that takes that ten-point-three-five percent down to about six percent. So technically, that's a non-valeant protest, even though you received it. Here is the site plan that was offered up as a part of the rezoning request to go from townhome to central business district, if I can get to the chart, which is really what I'm after here. Maybe we have our land use matrix here somewhere. There we go. Okay, so, single-family attached is allowed in central business district with an S U P. They're currently zoned townhome, so their occupancy is single-family attached townhome. They're op- operating by right in conformance with the zoning ordinance. There, what was happening was, we were having one property owner operate it as a short-term rental, in essence, a bed and breakfast, and when you look at our zoning ordinance requirements, under townhome, you see this X, so that, that indicates to us that, uh, in townhome districts, short-term rentals or bed breakfasts are prohibited. So the applicant, the southernmost property owner is, has made a- So, the applicant, the southernmost property owner is, has made a request to rezone the property to Central Business District. And you can see, when we transfer over to our land use matrix, that bed and breakfast, both commercial and residential, are allowed by right and see Central Business District. But also, when you look at single-family attached, Central Business District does not allow for single-family attached residential occupants by right, it requires an SUP. So, there's a lot of moving parts to this. We have a, we have a comprehensive plan that suggests single-family residential detached. They've zoned it townhome, so they're operating lawfully within the zoning district, even though it's not really consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's fine. There's no, there's no foul there. They have a by-right application in their townhome district to, to use that for single-family attached. The, what's driving this is the request to allow for short-term rental or bed breakfast facility in one of the units. So, in order to get from A to B, they need to go through this kind of a long, serpentine, windy way to get there, zone it Central Business District, and get their SUPs for the single-family attached on the northernmost and the southernmost, which is their, their principal use currently. Now, as a part of going through the CBD mechanism, because, again, it's not allowed by right in townhome, Central Business District does allow and, and open up a whole cornucopia to other uses. Um, and it also doesn't have a parking requirement. So, for example, you can have, uh, general retail with merchandise displayed with no parking requirements. You can have a restaurant, uh, with no parking requirements in this particular zoning district. So, the nature of the discussion at P&amp;Z, um, from what I remember of the public hearing was, uh, the, the allowance for the Central Business District to open up something that is a little more out of character and, and has some adjacency issues prompted the P&amp;Z action, recommending a denial of all four applications by a vote of, uh, two to three. Or three, they voted to deny by a vote of three to two. Three dena, uh, three recommended denial, and two recommended supporting the request. So, those are the broad brushstrokes of what this particular application is about. Ultimately, I think they want a short-term rental bed and breakfast in the southernmost unit. Um, but currently, the, the hiccup or the hamstring here is our ordinance does not allow for B&amp;B considerations. It's prohibited, just off the chart, and he's trying to get there through this Central Business District, as we mentioned earlier, because it allows it by right in CBD. So, that's the long and short of it. Mayor, Counsel, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Scott, one question I got is item number fourteen, without eleven, twelve, and thirteen, well, actually, without eleven, then item fourteen doesn't even come into play, does it? Because they're asking for just a, uh, an SUP. They're asking for an SUP if the comprehensive plan changed, right?
So, right now, they can, let me double-check to see what item number fourteen was. So, the, the, the SUPs to allow for the single-family attached are to allow for the continuation of the occupancy of the townhome used as a single-family attached. When you look at the definition of the ordinance, it says, "Single-family attached includes both townhome and MD1," those, those occupancies of a structure with a common wall. So, if we, for example, zone this Central Business District without issuing these SUPs, it would throw the guy to the north in noncompliance, even though the guy to the south is operating a, if in the event the CBD gets approved, and he does a short-term rental there, and has it by right, without the SUP on the north side, it would throw him into noncompliance and violation of the zoning ordinance.
Which is divided by a wall.
Which is divided by a wall.
Okay. Okay, Scott, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearings. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? I know we have the applicant out there. Go ahead. This is, uh, how you pronounce your first name?
Glenn.
Glenn Wade.
Yes. Carla, I'm Glenn Wade. My, uh, address is, uh, two oh four North Brazos Street in Granbury, seven six oh four eight. Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, I have some handouts for the city council members. Mr. Mayor, Jeremy, may I approach?
Sure.
No, one's not. We don't count me.
They don't count me.
Yeah, he can't read. You owe me, Mayor. Thirty-nine.
My objective is to promote commerce and tourism for the city of Granbury and to maximize outcomes for the Granbury Downtown Streetscape Project Texas State Transportation Alternative Program grant. Did you receive, I emailed all these to you, to each city council member and the mayor. I assume y'all received these?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I also sent a letter a couple of weeks ago asking for a, a meeting to discuss, uh, I just received a denial from the planning and zoning, and I sent everybody, uh, an email. I guess you all received that as well. I didn't hear back, I didn't know if you received it. Uh, but I own, as I mentioned, I own the four-bedroom, four-bath home located at two oh four North Brazos. It's in the prime tourist, uh, district of Granbury, one block off of downtown square. Our adjacent neighbors include commercial businesses such as Langdon Center Concert Hall. Over the past five months, excuse me, I've offered my home as a short-term rental, three to seven night stays for twenty-plus visiting families. Uh, we promote walking access to all businesses on the square, to all visitors, uh, and this is one of the primary reasons why these families chose Granbury as their getaway destination. This walkability factor is, in fact, the reason the city of Granbury obtained a one-point-six million dollar grant funding from TAP state program for renovation of the square. Uh, this short-term rental home directly supports tourism, economic development, and walkability, as stipulated by the grant application. Uh, we maintain strict standards for each of our visiting families. Each renter is personally screened. I have a full-time property manager that manages this property, as well as a, a couple of beach houses we own in South Alabama on the beach and Gulf Shores. Um, but each applicant is screened prior to acceptance and monitored for compliance with house rules. We have quiet hours, parking restrictions, twenty-four-seven accessibility property manager on-call. Uh, the minimum stay requirement is three nights. Our total estimated economic impact for the short-term rental home is eighty-five thousand dollars annually infused into the Granbury economy. Uh, state and local lodging taxes, we've paid to the city of Granbury and the state of Texas for each of those twenty rentals, sixteen, excuse me, eighteen hundred dollars in five months, or forty-three hundred dollars annually. Uh, homeowners expenditures contributing to the Granbury economy, we pay local cleaning service an average of six thousand dollars annually. We pay utilities, cable, mortgage, insurance, property taxes, lawn maintenance, totaling fifty thousand dollars annually. Uh, each of these twenty families has infused an average of five hundred dollars each into the Granbury economy, a total of ten thousand dollars over this five-month period, or twenty-four thousand dollars annually. And I think that's conservative for what they spend when they come here. I mean, two visits today for ten people is, you know, a lot of money. Uh, below are some letters of endorsement from several of our visiting families validating the impact of this decision. On December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Granbury P&amp;Z Commission voted in a split decision, three to two, to disallow short-term rentals at my home near the square. This vote was cast based on incomplete and inaccurate information. Uh, due to this split P&amp;Z vote, the final decision now rests with the Granbury City Council today. The facts are presented here, support short-term rentals at this location clearly promotes economic health, community development, and is in support of the one-point-six million dollars received via the TAP grant. My request is that city council members carefully consider all the facts in this case and vote today to support. Two oh four North Brazos is a short-term rental stimulus to the Granbury economy and is a means to ensure property, proper usage of the TAP grant funding. I have, uh, five letters there, if you want to go through, but they're, uh, stating that people chose this house because of its proximity to the downtown. They like the fact that they can walk downtown. I had no idea that our city leaders would object to a, a bed and breakfast one block off the square, but here we are. Um, you, I won't go through all those five letters, but you're welcome to read them. I went around the, uh, also attached to your, uh, package there is, um, I went around the square today and got thirty-seven signatures from merchants that are approving, um, this petition than I have. And I would have gotten more, but it was, I just started this afternoon, and it was thirty degrees and not much activity out there, but, um, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for Glenn?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
So, you said there was incomplete and inaccurate information?
Yes, as Scott mentioned, uh, there were only two applicant, two, uh, neighbors that objected. Uh, one of them was a guy that lives in Dallas and has a lot over by the lake, two, next street over. His name is Tinkle. Uh, he didn't sign the application, but even though, um, it says in red letters to, you know, "Signatures required," I believe that protest letter was still submitted to the P&amp;Z, and I'm sure had an impact on their decision. That's one inaccuracy. The second inaccuracy is, uh-
I'm sorry, what's the inaccuracy there?
Well, he didn't sign it. I mean, I don't know who wrote that letter. It could have been Scott, it could have been Mr. Mayor. I don't know who, who wrote that, but-
Mr. Mayor, was it you?
No, it wasn't me.
Okay. But it says, "Signature required." I assume that means signature required.
Okay, so it was just there, it wasn't, it wasn't inaccurate or misinformation?
He didn't, I don't think he's here tonight. He's, he lives in Dallas, I don't think he's here tonight.
Okay.
Okay. The other inaccuracy was-
It was a mistake, it may not, it may be totally accurate, he just didn't sign it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. The other one, uh, the inaccuracy from the other one, uh, my neighbor, uh, the other person that protested, I believe is a resident of Oregon. That's where her address was, where the notice was sent. And she inaccurately quoted that she owned the property at two oh eight North Brazos. She doesn't own the property at two oh eight North Brazos. My next-door neighbor does, the person who is on this petition, or has made this application. She stated it on her form that she protested, and she also stated it in an email. Scott, do you have those handy, or?
In the email, in her email?
Her email to you, or to, to Scott. Uh, I received it from Carla, the email. I can, I can pull it up on my phone, I can't get it up on air. She stated that she owned two oh eight North Brazos, and she doesn't. That's the inaccuracy I'm talking about, Tony. And she lives in Oregon, I'm not sure why she protested.
There it is, Scott. What property does she own?
I'm not sure. I've never met her.
She's within the, she's within the-
She's within the two-hundred feet, but I don't, I've never met her, I've been there over six months, I've not, I'm not sure where she lives. I think her address is in Oregon.
Well, that's, where's your home address?
Uh, my home address? I have an address in Fort Worth, I've been in Fort Worth for about thirty years.
So, she, she lives out of town as well? But we sent her a letter for a reason, am I, am I right?
Right.
So, yes, so we sent her letters based on the site information from the appraisal district, which is what we're required to do.
She's plugged in the wrong address.
Twice.
Okay. Okay, so, again, I tend to lean on, lean on our commissions and our committees, what other information, and I know you, you've really worked your tail off to get in touch with all of us, but understand our limitations, too. If you come to each one of us and do, you know, "Vote for me, vote for me, vote for me," then we don't have, we don't want to be, uh, included in a walking quorum.
I wanted to make sure you had all the information.
Well, that's fine, but that's why we're here.
Okay.
So, so, understand our reluctance to do this, because we're held to a standard that many people are not aware of. I know you think you wrap your arm around us and buy us a cup of coffee, then, then we'll, we'll talk about this and we'll agree on something, but we're limited as far as the discussions we can have with you, even individually.
Okay.
Okay, so, I know you came by my office once or twice, and I know you went by several offices, or reached out to us in emails, and I got a text message from somebody today, uh, in, in support of you, but understand our limitations are, we can't, we simply can't have these discussions. And this is, this is not only directed at you, but really everybody out here.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't know we were invited for coffee. I might have went, had a cup with you, but, uh, by myself.
Counsel, any more discussion?
Yes, sir, I got a question.
Councilman Allen?
I got you next.
Uh, this is more to Scott. Whenever they went to P&amp;Z and it was wrong, the wrong addresses or the wrong people. Could y'all bring this up at the P&amp;Z, that they were wrong or not?
Well, it, it wasn't not discussed at P&amp;Z, and I checked with my staff on, we're required to send notices out based on the last approved municipal tax rule, and my staff actually vetted that today, and so they said that there was no error regarding the appraisal records on the last approved municipal tax rule, so...
We understand that, for sure. Now, did you go before P&amp;Z, explain to them that these were wrong addresses and stuff?
I didn't know it at the time, only got that from Carla after the fact. I didn't think there would be any objection to it, but-
So, you didn't go?
No, I was at the P&amp;Z meeting, and so was my neighbor, Mike, was there also, but we didn't, we didn't have any feedback from the council when they voted. That was it. There's no why they voted three-two, or, in fact, I asked for, uh, why one of the council, one of the committee members recused herself, and I was told that they weren't required to tell me that. Jeremy, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's right.
So, I was a little perplexed as to why she recused herself.
Scott, hypo, sorry, wait. Hypothetically, if a CPD was granted, what are the uses that could hypoth, just, for instance, the, the uses that could go in that zoning district?
So, for example, if the area property was zoned to Central Business District, um, by, these are by-right applications. Uh, we could have vintage auto sales there. Uh, we could have a savings and loan. We could have a, now my eyesight is getting bad, I need some readers. Consignment merchandise store indoor, we could have a consignment merchandise, used merchandise, outside activity by right. We could have a dry cleaning pickup, drop-off store there, fraternal organization or civic club, a key or locksmith shop, laundromat, self-serve.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Ryder?
I don't think that anybody up here is objecting to what you do and bring into the city. I, this is my own personal observation. If we make this zoning change, A, Scott has already said we're going to put another neighbor immediately into noncompliance. That causes a problem with the SUP, right?
Without issuing the SUP.
Without issuing, okay, so-
The only way to put them in, the only way to put them in compliance is to issue the SUPs.
Exactly, so we're creating extra work for that neighbor already. Um, my problem is exactly what our assistant city manager just mentioned. Nobody has a problem, I think, with what you are doing, but if you ever decide to sell the property, then we have a whole myriad of other issues that come up, and we have, there's no parking requirement for this zoning. There are a whole bunch of other issues that can come up, and then we've got next-door neighbors who may have to deal with those other businesses coming in.
Okay. Uh, the prior owner used it as a bed and breakfast. The only thing I ever intended for it to be used for is a, a short-term rental, or you're calling unhosted bed and breakfast.
Yes.
I have no intention of putting in a laundromat or any of those things.
Well, and that's my point, I don't think that you do, personally.
I know, if, if, you're right, if I were to sell to someone else, they could do that. But my next-door neighbor, who is a residence, owns a residence, is zoned Central Business District. She can put in all those things you mentioned as well. Uh, the next-door neighbor to her, which is two doors down from me, is a bed and breakfast. He's in the Central Business District. He can put in a locksmith and a laundromat or whatever he wants. I didn't come to the city saying, "I want a commercial business district." I went to Larry in zoning in Brett, and I said, "This was used as a short-term rental, I'd like to do the same. What do I need to do?" And he said, "Well, you're, if you were duplex, you could do it, but you're zoned townhouse." Well, I consider it a duplex. A townhouse to me is rows of houses and- A townhouse to me is rows of houses, and I own a duplex on the beach and, uh, they're, you know, I own one and I bought the other one, but they're separate properties, no problem. Both, one was a rental and one was a residence, and I now own both sides. It never was a problem in the five years that we had a neighbor. I have my neighbor that just bought the other side of this townhouse. I actually tried to buy the other, but he outbid me, unfortunately, but he's a good neighbor, and he came down to the P&amp;Z and supported me. Uh, and he, he's all for it. Um, I, I appreciate your concern, but it wasn't my intent to expand the Central Business District. I wanted, all I wanted to do was have a bed and breakfast, but my next-door neighbor is a Central Business District and she's a, she owns a residence, and it's not going to be the end of the world if we zone it to Central Business District. If you want to give me a, a, you know, one-year permit like you do others, I noticed some of the other bed and breakfasts were approved unanimously here. I thought this was, I thought having a residence a block from the city square would be a good place to be, but had I known it was going to be this difficult, I never would have bought it. I'm stuck with it now. I don't want to sell it. I just want a bed and breakfast, and I don't, I don't care how you zone it. I actually talked to, uh, Larry about zoning it historic. Uh, I did a historic designation house in Fort Worth, several years ago, and it, um, the Nutt family, who as you know, donated the first 40 acres that became the city of Granbury, they owned my house. So I thought it was historic. I thought, well, let's get it, let's use that route, but he said it was, I think, three years too new, so I can't go historic. I, I'm not pushing Central Business District expansion. I just want to use it as a bed and breakfast. That's all I want to do. That's all I've ever wanted to do, and I'll sign anything that says that's all I'll do.
Scott, I got a question for Scott here. Is, is there any way that you could allow for B&amp;B to, to be in a town, in a townhome district?
Currently, currently the zoning ordinance does not allow, because basically it's an X, it's prohibited, so the, um, so currently by ordinance, no. Not in townhome.
But has it been, I mean, is it, in any other communities, do they allow it or is that?
So we've looked at other communities, and the communities that we've looked at are not by right, but there are some communities that issue, uh, SUPs in townhome districts.
Is Fredericksburg, excuse me, is Fredericksburg one of those communities?
Yeah. The conditional use permit.
They, Fredericksburg, I don't know if you're familiar with that city, but it's a great, thriving tourist city, and they issue permits for that, for townhouses.
Okay. Go ahead. Mr. President? I was just going to ask Scott along those same lines, if we were, if council wanted to pursue that line of thinking, is, are there options available to them, uh, through the zoning ordinance, possible zoning ordinance changes or amendments?
So if council wants to, um, if they're uncomfortable, step back. They're uncomfortable with the issuance of an SUP district because of the myriad of uses that can come in?
To CBD?
To CBD?
Yeah.
Correct. Um, then they could, in their, um, motion of discomfort on the CBD, issue a statement to city staff, direct city staff to come back with a zoning ordinance amendment to allow for SUPs in townhome, and we could look at some, some of these other model cities like, uh, Fredericksburg and Kerrville that are more akin to Granbury, and then, um, come back before P&amp;Z and city council with a proposal for SUPs to be issued on a case-by-case basis in these type of districts.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman, Councilperson Reiner?
If that happens, what happens in the meantime? Can you still continue to operate and pay hot tax and, or is you have to suspend operation?
That's so, that's ultimately a code issue maybe that Michael can better, uh, respond to, but we, you know, my, my boilerplate answer is we can't tell somebody to violate the ordinance. That would be like, you know, like the police officer.
Excuse me. I don't want to call the 12 people that have already booked for this year and tell them, "Don't come to Granbury." I'd rather not do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
Twelve families, not 12 people.
Councilman Mobley.
Well, and, and I hope you get the feeling that we're all trying to make this work, but not get ourselves anchored to something we can't get out of later.
I appreciate your concern, absolutely.
What I'd like to do is, is I would like to go into executive session, talk to our attorney, find out what options are available so that we can make, uh, an educated decision there.
So we've got a, in form of a motion, I've got a motion to go ahead and recess to executive session, to have a second on that?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Couch? All in favor of going to executive session at this time? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we will go into executive session. I, I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convening in the open session that all the members are present. The city will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section 551.
072?
072.
I really got a question.
Good morning.
Um, I just, uh, I just have a question.
Well, uh, we're going to come back out and finish discussing this with a public hearing and everything after executive session. It, we're, we're not going to make a decision back there. Okay? Okay? There was no action taken back in executive session. We'll continue on the items that are in front of us here. We're still into the public hearing, and we do have a lady that wanted to speak in the public, there you go. Go ahead and come up to the podium here.
I'm Melinda Walker. Um, I live at, my husband and I live at 303 Mary Lou Court. Uh, we own the lot, or actually two lots that directly back up to, um, the property that Glenn Wade is, uh, interested in, um, pursuing here. Uh, I don't know if you can see it directly on there, but we live in the, uh, the Old Mill Crossing neighborhood, and we live on the circle there, uh, that borders, um, uh, the back of Glenn Wade's property. And, uh, and we've, we've talked to Glenn Wade about the, uh, what he's trying to do, and I just wanted to kind of just weigh in with my point of view, uh, because obviously we have a very strong vested interest in what goes on in that area. And, um, personally, neither my husband and I, we don't have any issue at all with him renting the bed and breakfast, um, and, and as he's mentioned, he's had it operating for several months, and we have not experienced any, you know, issues, concerns, noise, or whatever. Um, that said, I think, as we've discussed tonight, I think we would have concerns about rezoning, uh, not so much about, again, with, with Mr. Wade owning the property and what he might do with it, but I think if somebody mentioned down the road if it was to be sold, um, then the kind of the precedence there that somebody else could come in and do something else. So I guess what I would, you know, and again, I don't know what was discussed at the, um, special session, but, um, if there was a way to somehow, whether it's this special use permit or the rezoning you guys had mentioned as an option, um, we would be supportive of that, but we would definitely have concerns about the rezoning to Central Business District. But again, if we can achieve what he's looking for in a way that, that doesn't require that, um, that would be what we would like to support. That's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else in the public wish to speak on this item? No, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any, uh, any more discussions or any questions for Scott or, uh, Mr. Wade? If not, we'll, uh, we'll go to the, uh, the first item, item number 11, which was a public hearing considering a request to, uh, amend the 2016 comprehensive plan. Have a motion to, uh, amend the 2016 comprehensive plan. Looking for a motion.
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny it?
Second.
Second? Have a second by Councilman Allen? Any more discussion? Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council, Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
That is denied. The next item, item number 12, was a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 1806, which was approving a request of Glenn Wade to rezone. Council, you got any more discussion on this item? Well, I opened it up all at once. Yeah, yeah. Question was with the public hearing, usually when they all combine, I go ahead and open the public hearing, which involves each one of those items there, so 11, 12, and 13, 14 was all incorporated. Number 12, so, uh, I'm looking for a motion on, uh, item number 12 then.
Motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny that rezoning. Have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on that? Councilperson Reiner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
That is denied. Item number 13 was a public hearing to consider adopting the ordinance to approve the request of Glenn Wade for an SUP. I'm looking for a motion to, uh, for the SUP that is in front of us.
Motion to deny.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen to deny the SUP.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the SUP? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
That is denied. And item number 14 was also the public hearing considered and adopting the ordinance to approve the request of Michael and Sharon Siveta for an SUP. I'm looking for a motion on that SUP.
Motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny that SUP by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on this item? Council Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner, how do you vote?
Aye.
That SUP is also denied. Bear with us here. After further discussion with the attorney and, uh, with, uh, Scott out there, I think the council would like to, uh, make a motion for the city staff to, uh, to set up an ordinance that would, uh, basically provide for, uh, the use of a, uh, an unhosed B&amp;B. Is that true, Scott?
So you're directing staff to amend the ordinance to allow for SUPs in townhomes?
Right. And possibly other districts, at least to look at it.
Okay.
So we want to make a direction, and I'm looking for a motion to make that direction for the staff to, uh, to accommodate that.
So move.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Allen, and I have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Would there be a timeline in that thing, Scott?
So in looking at the, uh, request to amend the zoning ordinance, what we could do, because we have a publishing, uh, date coming up, this coming Thursday?
This coming Thursday?
This coming Thursday, we could actually get it in the paper and have it published in Saturday's paper and turn that ordinance amendment around as quickly as having it to P&amp;Z in around the third week of January, and council the first Tuesday, uh, of February.
So it would be on the, so it would be the council diocese, the first-
Tuesday.
-council meeting in February?
Correct.
You got something? I was just going to say, and then if it hypothetically were approved by P&amp;Z and council, then a, a process of getting something approved would have to happen either in concert or shortly thereafter.
Correct.
Okay.
Does, does, uh-
Mr.-
Wade have to turn anything in before then?
What, what we could do is just to have a conversation with, with Mr. Wade after the council meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So Mr. Wade, you understanding all this?
Yes, I do. I appreciate it. Uh, do you want me, do I need to attend any of these future meetings?
Why don't you step up there to the mic, Mr. Wade?
You will?
I'm sorry, do I need to attend these future meetings, um, and what exactly the dates?
We'll, we'll address that with you after, or Scott will after the meeting. Is that okay, Scott?
Yeah, we can give him a calendar of the dates.
See, so, so we're, we're really trying to be good guys up here.
Appreciate it.
And gals. Okay, so we got a motion and a second.
Yes.
All right? Any more discussion on this? Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
And Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
So that is approved. We look forward to that, and we will see that at the first meeting in February. Council, that ends the deliberation agenda. There's no, no other items on here. There's no further discussion. Council meeting is adjourned.